Welcome to the November 11th, 2013 Troy City Council meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor A.C. Phipps from Evanswood Church of God with us this evening, who will provide us with the invocation. If you would stand, please, and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Shall we pray?
Good evening.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for this city council. We ask that you would give them wisdom. We pray for all of our veterans. We thank you for today, where we can celebrate them. We thank you for those especially that have paid the ultimate sacrifice to allow us to sit in this room in freedom tonight. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bitner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present, our first order of business is the installation ceremony. 2013-14 city council convened, and if I could ask Councilman Pennington to go down to the podium for swearing in.
I solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I will. I guess it's still Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, if you would go down to the podium.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I will.
Thank you, Mayor.
And now our newest member, if I could ask Councilwoman Ellen Hoderick to go down to the podium.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Ellen. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem, and in the order of Mayor Pro Tem, I will defer to Councilman Teetz at this time.
I'll pass, I guess. Is that the right term?
We'll use that.
It works for me.
Next up would be Councilman Henderson. Mayor, or Councilman Fleming, did you want to make an appointment there?
Yeah. It is odd that Troy City Council hereby appoints Dave Henderson to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the city council of the City of Troy for a term scheduled to expire at 7:30 PM on Monday, November 10th, 2014.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we appoint Councilman Henderson to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Troy for the term scheduled to expire at 7:30 PM on Monday, November 10th, 2014. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, congratulations. If you could step down to the podium for swearing in, please.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Mayor Pro Tem in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Our next order of business is the adoption of the city council rules of procedure. We will pass on this this evening, and it will be brought forward at the next meeting. Our next order of business is the adoption of the Code of Ethics for city council. Councilman Campbell, would you like to move that?
Sure. I'd move the Ethics of the City Council as printed for a vote. Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell and supported by Councilman Fleming, that the adoption of the Code of Ethics for the City of Troy as printed. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is the adoption of the Code of Ethics for boards and committees. Councilman Fleming?
Mayor. It is odd that Troy City Council hereby adopts the Code of Ethics for the boards and committees of the City of Troy as recorded by the city clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we adopt the Code of Ethics for boards and committees as printed. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. It's my pleasure to come down to the podium and present a certificate of appreciation It's my honor this evening to present a certificate of appreciation to Ani Fakori. And I'd like to read that to the audience. Whereas the mayor and city council of the City of Troy on behalf of the city express their appreciation to Ani Fakori, a 27-year Troy resident. That's a long time.
I was a baby.
In recognition of outstanding service to our country as well as the Troy community. And whereas in October of 2007, Ani Fakori graduated from the FBI Citizens Academy in Detroit and served as an FBI ambassador. And whereas in 2008 and 2013, Ani Fakori was invited to the FBI Training Facility in Quantico, Virginia, and the FBI Headquarters in Washington, DC, where he became a member of the U.S. Customs and Border Protection Citizens Academy. And whereas Ani Fakori spent close to two years in Iraq, Jordan, and Kuwait with the Warrant Prosecution Task Force under the State Department, Homeland Security, FBI, and CIA, as well as working with the Air Force Office of Special Investigations. And whereas within his diplomatic position, his job was to make sure everything was done according to U.S. laws, with a goal of always put hardcore terrorists out of commission. And whereas Ani Fakori also found time recently to attend and graduate from the Troy Citizens Police Academy, showing his commitment to serving our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council express the city's appreciation and recognition to Ani Fakori for his unselfish devotion and outstanding service to our country as well as our community. It's presented on this 19th day, originally of October 2013, but we're here today on November 11th of 2013. It's signed by myself and all members of city council. Congratulations, Ani Fakori, for a job well done.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I truly humbly accept this prestigious award, and I want to thank Mayor Slater, city council members, and Cindy Stewart, and the city manager, and my dear friend Gene Stein. They are more deserving people than I am, but thank you very much, and God bless USA.
Our next order of business is a presentation by Kiwanis Foundation on Troy Lights of Hope for 2013, and then will be introduced by Barbara Knight. And Barbara made a presentation to the DDA board last week, I think it was, and I thought it was a great presentation, and I asked her to come tonight to present it to the city council and the citizens of Troy. So welcome, Barbara, and thank you for doing this.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Mayor, councilmen and women, it's my honor to be here this evening. This is a very brief presentation of what the Troy Lights of Hope project is about. We have a website called Troy Lights of Hope. This is presented to you by the Troy Kiwanis Foundation. When you go to the website, there are two options. One is to sponsor a tree to be lit on Big Beaver Road. The other is to buy light sets. And so what you see before you is exactly what you'd see when you go online to the website. So let's talk about sponsoring a tree first. This part of the program is to actually bring a brand-new tradition to the City of Troy that we're really, really excited about. This thing will take on a life of its own in the years to come, and we're really looking forward to lighting 50 trees this year of the 207 evergreen trees located in the median along Big Beaver Road between Coolidge and Rochester Road. They'll be lit with soft white LED commercial-grade light sets. I want to stress that this part of the program is not a fundraiser. We are using city-owned property. This is a community service project. It is completely self-funded by the sponsorship. The sponsorship is $1,200 per tree, and that would cover the cost of lighting the tree. Any funds left over would go into next year's project to help reduce the cost of next year to the sponsors. Every sponsor gets a banner, which is a double-sided printed banner that would hang on Big Beaver Road, plus lots of publicity, and of course, a donation is tax-deductible. Returning sponsors next year would have the first right to sponsor again next year. And we're going to coordinate the lighting of the trees with the City of Troy lighting of their tree on Wednesday, December 4th. This is an example of what a banner may look like, thinking here in this example, the City of Troy. Go on, Cindy. Thank you. Here's kind of a cost breakdown per tree. I'm not sure how much you want to go into detail here. There's a lot that goes into this. I do want to stress that the City of Troy has upgraded the existing defective electrical infrastructure in the amount of $11,000 as part of this project. In addition to that, the program itself is paying to repair the receptacles, which are the outlets on each of the lamp posts, publicity, and printing, and banner, and the actual light supplies, which we're getting wholesale, labor and logistics, and web-related services, and electricity. That's how we came to our total amount to sponsor a tree. Okay, the next area is where you can buy lights. We're encouraging local businesses and area residents to buy light sets that would match the types of lights that are being put on the trees on Big Beaver. And so when you go to the website, you can click here to buy light sets. This part is the fundraiser, and the Kiwanis Foundation will continue to use those funds raised to benefit the Troy Boys and Girls Club, scholarships for Troy graduates, and other numerous local charities that the Kiwanis enjoys supporting. This is also to raise awareness of the Troy Kiwanis Club and those charities that work so hard in our community to make it a fine place to live and to work. So we have two separate websites that were, and merchant accounts and bank accounts, all the funds are being kept separate. And I'd like to make special thanks to the folks listed here, especially to the Troy Downtown Development Authority for their support, for the City of Troy for their very hard work through the Public Works, and their guidance and cooperation, and our other suppliers are listed there. That's it.
Thank you. I know we asked you to condense your presentation from the DDA presentation, but I think that covered it very well. Are there any questions from council at this point? I think what they're trying to do here is similar to Rochester, where they light the buildings. This will be lighting the corridor and trying to attract businesses and people to our area for shopping and restaurants and business area. You should be able to see this from 14 Mile and I-75 all the way to South Boulevard easily, I think. And I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing this and making this presentation. Hopefully this will work and generate some sponsors. I know you have, last I heard, 10 trees, and your goal is 50 this year, correct?
We're up to, we're at about 20 right now.
20.
Yes. So hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have 50.
And hopefully some people are watching, and it's a great way to get involved with the city. And thank you so much.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Thank you.
Our next order of business is a presentation to America Recycles Day for 2013, and if I could ask Pam Brady, the SACRA representative, to come forward. This is a proclamation with small font, just to let you know. It's my honor to present the proclamation for America Recycles 2013. And if I could, I'd like to read this, because it is very important.
Please. If you would, please.
Whereas the world has changed a lot in the past century from individually packaged food servings to disposable diapers, more garbage is generated now than ever before. The average American discards 7.5 pounds of garbage every day. Our garbage, our solid waste stream, all goes to landfills, where it's compacted and buried. And whereas to focus the nation's attention on the importance of recycling, businesses and industries, government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and individuals have joined together to celebrate America Recycles 2013, and are encouraging their employees, staff, customers, membership, and all citizens to pledge to buy more recycled content products starting today. And whereas participating in America Recycles 2013 is one way our citizens can help raise awareness about the need to reduce waste by reusing recycling and buying recycled products. And whereas the more we recycle, the less garbage winds up in our landfills and incineration plants. By reusing aluminum, paper, glass, plastics, and other materials, we can save production and energy costs and reduce by up to 75% the negative impacts that the extraction and processing of virgin materials has on the environment. Plastics made from precious and nonrenewable petroleum and aluminum, which is mined from oxide, are especially important to recycle. And whereas recycling helps protect our resources, our environment, and our quality of life, the entire loop, reduce, reuse, recycle, is completed when you buy products made from recycled material. And whereas from July 2012 to June 2013, the City of Troy recycled 4,691 tons of glass, paperboard, cardboard, newspaper, metal, tin, and plastic, and 8,786 tons of compost. And whereas state and community leaders need to spread the word about the excellent programs they have established, the growth of markets for recyclable materials, and the importance of buying recycled products. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Troy Council hereby proclaims America Recycles 2013 in Troy, Michigan, and urges all Troy residents to reduce, reuse, and recycle. Be it further resolved that America Recycles 2013 is celebrated year-round to encourage people to recycle and buy products made from recycled materials. The theme for America Recycles 2013 is "I Want to Be Recycled."
A long time from now.
They weren't talking about me. Presented this 11th day of November 2013, it's signed by myself and all members of city council. Congratulations, and I know Pam, you're deeply involved in this.
Yes.
So congratulations, and thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you.
If you could speak into the microphone.
Sure. It's the advantage of being short. I don't have to move anything. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the newly elected council members. Good luck and best wishes for a productive four years onboard. I am Pam Brady, and the hat I'm wearing tonight is that of the SACRA Master Recycler and volunteer member of their recycling committee. I am also a SACRA Advanced Master Composter, with all that implies, being both groups' member since their inception's over 20 years ago. Please note this proclamation doesn't have my name on it anywhere, and it shouldn't. I am accepting it in the name of all of the residents and businesses in Troy who recycle. For those who like numbers, for Troy, the amount of recycling increased by 5.5% when I compare 2012-13 with 2011-12. The amount of trash decreased by 1.7% comparing the same two periods, so Troy is making progress. If I look at the data on a per-person basis, the average Troy resident recycled 117 pounds per year, while he or she threw away 665 pounds of material per year. I would fear that there were lots of pounds in the trash that could have been recycled. That is our challenge. But what can be recycled? That answer is found with a quick look at the library display in December that my husband, Mike, and I will put up, and a little investigation into the SACRA written materials. I invite everyone to visit the recycling website, www.sacra.org, and click on the multitude of information pieces and short videos that are available to interest you. They are very interesting and informative, and the site is easy to navigate. Council members and new city staff, if you'd like a citizen-to-citizen tour of the facility, please contact me. I'd be more than happy to show you around. Or anyone can get a tour by staff and volunteers, including me, tomorrow, Thursday, and Saturday. We do it twice a year, and for America Recycles Day, we open it up to people of all ages and groups, and it doesn't matter how big or small, you're welcome to come and get a tour. Also for America Recycles Day, the SACRA Recycling Center, as well as Troy City Hall, is selling recycling bins for half price, at $6, for all the rest of November. If you're like me, with the ever-larger amount of items that SACRA recycles, I am using two bins weekly, and the volume of my garbage is cut more than half. That's half going into the landfill from my house. That's half of what the city has had to pay to landfill my garbage, and it gives money to the city for whatever I put in the recycling bin. If you need help from the city, call Emily Frontera, Troy's Office and Refuge and Recycling Coordinator, at 248-524-3399. Not that I don't call her often, I just have her number on my mind. Let me reiterate, every item going into the garbage can costs the city money to the tune of $27.50 a ton. Every item that goes into the recycle bin gives money back to the city in the amount of $35 a ton. Economically, it is this simple. Let me share with you what Tim Rishnack, Troy Public Works Director, reminds us, that ounces build into pounds, and pounds build into tons, and tons are equal to savings of dollars, both by sales of product and averted disposal costs. So that's two good things. Trash costs us, recycling pays us, but environmentally, it is way more important. We should conserve as many natural resources as possible for ourselves and our future generations. Thank you. And I'm using the backside of the paper.
Thank you, Pam. My apologies to the newly sworn-in council members. I didn't give you an opportunity to introduce your family or maybe say something. So at this point, Councilman Pennington, did you want to introduce your family? Anybody here? There's this old hat for you.
Well, my son's in boot camp in the Navy right now, and my daughter's a nurse, and she's working tonight. But my wife is back here, so I want to point her out. There's my wife, Phyllis. And I just want to thank everyone in Troy for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to introduce my wife, Paula, who's back there. Paula, if you'll stand. And my son, Mark, is here as well. And thank you for coming, Mark. Thank you for your support. My daughter-in-law, Nikki, is at home with our, with their four-month, well, three-month-old, three-to-four-month-old grandchild now. I can't keep track, I lose track of when you should start talking weeks and when you should start talking months. So I think it's about three months, well, start talking weeks. But they've been tremendous supporter of me for my, now for my third term on City Council. So, and thank all the citizens and businesses for your support. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to serve you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hutterick, I think I see a few friendly faces for you out there. So it's your turn.
I want to acknowledge my husband, Mike, who is here tonight. As many of you know, if you know me, I'm very involved in the community, and the reason I can do what I do is because of Mike. He is very involved in the community through me. Came home tonight, he had dinner ready. He's just, he's a tremendous man, and I appreciate him very much and the support he gave. My daughter Lynn is in Alexandria, and actually, she's in Washington, D.C. at class right now, working on a master's degree, and would give her right arm to be here. She very much loves this community and everything she gained from it, and believes strongly in giving back to it, and has tried to help us accomplish that even from afar. My son Greg is working tonight, and he has been very supportive, even as he kind of works through some health issues. What I'm trying to say to you is we're a family that loves this place, we've gotten a lot out of it, and we see it as our responsibility to give back to it. And I think it's appropriate and very fitting that we were installed on Veterans Day here. If folks can serve our country in that way, we can all serve one another here with decorum, civility, discussion, listen to one another, make our decisions, and keep moving on. And I look forward to doing that with you and serving with you. Thank you.
There are no carryover items, so our first order of business in the public hearings section is file number PUD 10-A, the Proposed Revision to Concept Development Plan and Preliminary Development Plan, northeast corner of Big Beaver and Kilmer. Section 22 currently zoned PUD. And I see staff is ready for a presentation before, but...
Good evening, Mayor Slater.
I'm going to open the public hearing though first. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big screen behind Mayor Slater, as well as the screens to the left and the right. The application this evening, as Mayor Slater indicated, is for proposed revisions to a PUD, a Planned Unit Development, which is a mixed-use development located at the northeast corner of Big Beaver and Kilmer. Here's the location map. You see it's located on, again, on north side of Big Beaver, between Livernoy and Rochester. And here you see an aerial photograph of the site, zoning, which, the pink zoning here indicates it's zoned PUD. The PUD, as I indicated, has been approved, it was approved June 15th of 2009, and this is a depiction of what was approved. As I indicated, it's a mixed-use development. The orange along the front here, this is Big Beaver Road to the south, north is up. This is approximately 20,000 square feet of retail. There's various, there's restaurants and other uses in there, in the frontage, and on the east side is a Tim Hortons with a drive-thru. That portion of the planned unit development has been constructed and it's under operation. I encourage people to go out there and visit it. It's very attractive. It's got some public art on displayed, not only on paintings that are on the wall, but it's got some trees, stainless steel trees that are very, very nice. To the north, this section here was approved for 14 attached residential units. They were not constructed. The recession, the timing of the recession happened, and this was kind of put on hold. Although the landscaping and the wall along North Property Line, as well as the utilities were installed, the 14 units were not installed. Fast forward to today. The residential component, that piece of property, has been acquired by Robertson Brothers, and they wish to add two additional units. 14 are approved, they want to do 16. So this is what they want to do. This is a depiction here. You'll notice what they intend to do is add the two units here to the east, as far from the single-family residential to the north as possible within the residential component. They did some other minor revisions, they kind of squared out, squared up the drives and the driveway and the buildings. If you go back, they were, they were kind of at an angle. I'll give you a technical planning term, wonky. This is called wonky right here. That's a really, really bad joke no one's laughing at. So zooming in a little bit to the residential component, you see they're also, they're maintaining this park element here. It wasn't at an angle before, and again, they've squared this up. The buildings are going to actually have less of a footprint than the approved buildings. They're going to be the same height, and they're going to be no closer to the residential property to the north than the approved 14. They provided floor plans, elevations, you see the elevations here, and this is a colorized rendering of the elevations. And what the approved residential units were consistent with the architecture, the design flair for the commercial property to the south, and Robertson Brothers felt it was a little edgy for Troy and for this particular area in Troy. So they went with something that was more kind of commercial, more residential in character and a little bit more kind of traditional, so that it would be a good transition between the residential to the north and the commercial. And you see here a rendering of the park element that's going to run between the buildings. And that's a brief summary of what's proposed. What they're essentially proposing, Mayor Slater, is approval of the revised Concept Development Plan and Preliminary Development Plan, so they can move forward and build 16 units. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Resident Kevin Douglas has signed up to speak on this item. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Happy Veterans Day. I moved into Troy in April of 2008. I currently now have my 10-year-old daughter and a four-and-a-half-month-old son. You still go by weeks, but I forget where we're at. I live just north of the PUD right now. I don't know if you can bring up the map? Thank you. It was approached to us probably about a year after we did move in, the developers of this entire lot. This wasn't a completely vacant lot, nice greenage area. I live pretty much on the left-hand side there. What is that, 11? 3131 is my address there? This one? Nope, just to the left, on the other side of Kilmer, two up, one, two, right there. That's where we live, and we had a few concerns when they were bringing this to our attention. Pretty much everybody within that block was brought to Bahama Breeze. They laid out the whole plan of what this unit was going to be, shared with us the site plans, what the condos were going to be, what was going to be in the front. Pretty much our biggest concern was safety. I don't know how many people here have been on Big Beaver Road between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m., going east and west, but usually it's parking lot. The road just to the north is Hartland. Hartland runs from Rochester to Livernoy. That becomes a drag strip between that timeframe. Every single north-south road from Kilmer all the way down to Troy, which is getting closer to Livernoy, is every little cut-through that comes back into our neighborhood. There are no sidewalks in our neighborhood. My daughter goes to school right at Waddles Elementary in that neighborhood as well. So when this was coming in, that was our biggest concern, was traffic that was going to be coming from this development, coming back into the neighborhood, because turning onto Big Beaver is a challenge. It's a challenge even without that there. The recession did hit, they did not put the condos in right away, but they did go ahead and start tearing down and putting in the commercial property that was there. About six months after that first meeting, we were never included in any other meeting, any other notification of what was going on, until one day bulldozers showed up, and they were tearing down the house that was on the property and started bulldozing. I guess they felt that we were far enough north at 3131 that we were not affected, or wanted to be brought up to speed of what was going on. So thank goodness, I finally got a little yellow card in the mail that this was coming on. Since that unit has gone into play, I'm actually extremely shocked that more accidents have not happened coming out of that development, because there is an additional exit in between Bahama Breeze and Kilmer where that is. When you're pulling out of Kilmer, you cannot see any traffic coming down the road, any cars coming out of that commercial property is blocked. You cannot see in that right-hand drive. So it has affected the ability of coming in and out. The bus does come down that road as well, it has affected the schedule of that bus. So that has been a concern. As cars are coming out, there's an exit literally 20 feet off of the road, coming onto Kilmer Drive. If someone is in that drive, which they have blocked that drive, I have almost T-boned somebody just coming onto my road as those people are coming off.
Your three minutes time period is...
I completely apologize. My concern is safety. There's more traffic that'll be coming by adding 14 developments. You're adding another two, you're throwing 40 more people that are in this. I'd like the council to take a look at that, maybe this planned group, talk with more of the residents of what is going to happen, and to address that, because the last thing I want, as you see my nice big driveway, is someone coming down the road, turning in and taking out my 10-year-old daughter or my one-year-old child.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the table for resolution and discussion.
Mayor.
Councilman Fleming?
I'd like to make a comment relative to this public hearing, as well as the next one, but it'll apply to both. Having just run for City Council, I have signs all over the city. I may have had signs on this development, I don't know, people put up signs. I think someone told me I had signs on the next property that's coming up, the Marriott Hotels. As council members, we receive donations from developers, all sorts of developers. We may have received donations from this developer, I don't know, the Marriott developers. I assure you, and in the interest of transparency, you can go to the county and see who made contributions to my campaign or any other campaign. I can also assure you that no amount of contribution is going to affect my vote or the way I vote, okay? But that happens, you get contributions from individuals, from developers, and it happens all the time. If I thought, or if you think that it's affecting my vote, I'd be happy to give back any contribution any developer gives me on a project like this, or any other project that'll come before this council in the next four years, okay? But in the interest of transparency, you just need to know that as citizens, that contributions do come, you'll see sign locations and businesses, neighborhoods, but that in no way affects or influenced me. We're elected to serve all the people and all the businesses, and that's what we do. We look at each, I personally look at each, each public event like this, and each offering, and each new business on its own merit, not on anything else. I just wanted to disclose that in the interest of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Everybody up here at the table has dealt with that in one form or another, I think. Councilman Campbell?
Yes, I just wondered, has Robertson had any meetings with, have anybody, nobody spoken with anybody in the neighborhood about this? They just started digging, I find it hard to believe. Because we had, we had approved it before, and they can't really start building until it's re-approved, right?
Sure. We're at the table, thank you.
I was going to answer.
Do we know that? Do you want to wave?
You can wave it.
Do you want to wave that? I'll defer to the administration at this point.
The gentleman who just came to the microphone is Jim Clark with Robertson Brothers, and I think he was prepared to answer that question.
Okay. Come on back up. Come on back up.
Sorry about that, Mayor.
That's okay, I wasn't sure who you were, so...
Jim Clark, 690, Jim Clark with Robertson Brothers, 6905 Telegraph Road. We did not meet with the neighbors. This is a project we're joint-venturing with the existing owners. They went through an approval process. You know, the overall site plan is requesting two additional units, and it was approved for 13,000 gross square feet, and we're 9,600 gross square feet. So we probably should have met with all the neighbors, but it was an existing, you know, it's already developed, and they fit on the property. So that's our fault and our mistake for not meeting with the neighbors.
Thank you. Does somebody want to move the resolution so we can get a discussion on this? Mayor Protem Henderson?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
I'll support that.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson and supported by Councilman Fleming, that we approve E1 as printed. Is there further discussion? Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I think we're all concerned about safety and public safety here, but if this is approved tonight, then I would just ask, and I think we'll certainly get that, that the police department, you know, look at the speed limit on this road and the traffic committee, and really make sure that it's not being abused. I can understand the cut-through component, and I've lived in areas like that before, and it is a concern. I don't think adding a couple more units is going to make a significant difference, but I do think that as a council, we can ask city administration, ask our police chief and the seat-in-back there in the police department to really monitor the traffic on this and be very strict on the speed limits, because safety is certainly a major concern.
Further discussion? It is a point that is brought up almost every time there is an approval. We went through it on Alpine and just about every development. It is a concern, and Hartland has been a cut-through issue that I've been aware of for probably close to 40 years. So just keep in mind, every time the police department goes out and does an enforcement on a street, almost every ticket they write belongs to a citizen that lives in that community. So when you ask them to come out, be prepared that most of the tickets are going to be written to people that live in the community. But it is something we all are aware of. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Pittner?
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutterick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. Okay. Our next order of business is E2, Conditional Rezoning Application for Proposed Troy Marriott Hotels, West Side of Stevenson Highway, North of 14 Mile Road, Section 35, from O Office District to OM Office Mixed Use District. Okay, Mr. Carlisle, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Dick Carlisle. Carlisle, Workman Associates. For the benefit of the new council members, we are your planning consultants and work with your planning department. What you have before you tonight is a conditional rezoning. By Michigan law, conditional rezonings can be applied for by an applicant in a manner in which they offer specific conditions to their rezoning that may be offered to address certain concerns or issues or problems that they perceive that might occur with the rezoning application. The rezoning is... The rezoning is, it's 333 Stevenson Highway, and the request is from O Office to OM, which is Office Mixed Use District. What is being proposed are two hotels on this parcel, both four stories and height, 189 units, the other 91 units. And the conditions that were offered were the rezoning to the OM district, but specifically for lodging purposes. And a site plan was presented showing various other aspects of the site, which I'll share with you in a moment. Currently, the property is a vacant office building, a three-story office building that has come into some state of disrepair. Along Stevenson Highway is a mixture of zoning categories, all predominantly office, office mixed use, IB, which is our Integrated Business District, RC Research Center, and we know the area to the west behind here is zoned, single-family residential. The, this was considered over three different meetings at the Planning Commission, starting in July, later in August, later in October. Ultimately, the Planning Commission voted unanimously nine to zero to recommend approval of the conditional rezoning. And as part of this, they did include the site plan and special use approval, which was, of course, conditioned upon council's approval of the conditional rezoning. Some of the considerations that are before you here is the office vacancy that we have here in the city of Troy. We know that that's been a significant issue here, 30 percent higher in many areas. And as a result of the zoning ordinance, which was passed by this body, we've, we've offered alternatives to some of the office zoning, and you can see quite a bit of that occurring, of course, along Big Beaver and in other areas of the city. Other considerations are the compatibility of the surrounding uses, consideration of uses that could be built as of right, and the protection of the adjacent neighborhoods, which was, I know, a matter of that considerable discussion at the Planning Commission level. What was demonstrated in the site plan, which is a condition of the rezoning, was an increased rear yard setback, a substantial increase in the rear yard setback. Double row of 12 to 15-foot high trees, eight-foot decorative sound wall, and height limited to four stories. The, the district permits five stories. This is a, this is a image of the site plan. What I, as I indicated, the, the rear yard setback was increased from 50 feet to 178 to 185 feet. The double row of, of trees that were planted, that will be planted, are at the rear of the site in order to provide buffering and screening to the neighbors to the, to, to the west. Eight-foot decorative wall, a sound wall, certainly to attenuate any noise and nuisances that may occur in the parking area, and the height limited to 69 feet, four stories. The, the next image, and this might be a little bit difficult for you to see, but if you see these cross-sections, AA and BB, it'll, it will make more sense when you see the next slide. The, if you look at the, the top slide, this is where the existing office building is located. Under the zoning regulations of O District, this is what would be possible where the building could be located, 50 feet from the rear yard. And this is where the, the two proposed hotels are going to be located, which are a substantial distance from the rear property line. When you see the sightlines from the nearest residence with the evergreen trees, it provides, there's a, there's a fairly substantial barrier to, to view as a result of the locations of these buildings at the front part of the property and, of course, the, the oversized Real briefly, the, again, this illustrates that most, if not all, of the setback requirements, either compared to office or even with the office mixed use, are being exceeded, in other words, being more than met. And the, probably the most significant, significant one, of course, is this rear yard setback, which in that, either in the office district or the office mixed use, is a 50-foot setback. In this case, it's a, they are setting the buildings back from the rear property line 178 to 185 feet. The site plan did meet all the requirements of the ordinance in terms of setbacks, heights, and bulk regulations. The 186 parking spaces meets ordinance requirements. The landscape plan actually exceeded the ordinance requirements. The photometric plan, meaning the lighting plan, meets all the ordinance requirements. From the standpoint of the master plan, it was the determination of the Planning Commission that in this particular area, it does call for a mix of uses that are both business-related and those types of uses that support business-type of uses. The, we recognize, have recognized in the master plan the changing nature of the office market. It is, it's problematic in the city, and we are seeing in, in many areas a renewed focus on providing a mix of uses, commercial, mixed use. You just saw a previous project, which was a mixed-use project of commercial and residential. And so therefore, it was the determination of the Planning Commission that this use was compatible with, predominantly with the surrounding land uses. The conditional rezoning standards were also considered and met. I won't go through these in intricate detail, but again, the, the commission found that there was compatibility with the master plan, that the site could be adequately served by public utilities, and that the proposed conditions and proposed development was reasonable in consideration of the type of development that was being proposed. In particular, it was the buffering and the setback requirements that were particularly persuasive to the Planning Commission. The special land use standards were also considered because these are, hotels are special land use in that district. And again, there was a determination by the commission that there was compatibility with surrounding land use, that there was compatibility with the master plan, that there was a limited impact on public services, and there were compliance with the zoning ordinance standards. So the conclusion of, of the process that went before the Planning Commission was that the applicant did provide increased rear yard setbacks, increased landscaping, all to offset some of the concerns about compatibility with the neighboring residential properties. It was consistent with the master plan and met the conditional, the standards for conditional rezoning and special land use standards, and consequently, there was a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission. So I will be more than happy to answer any of the council's questions, if there are any.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Okay.
And Councilman Fleming, did you have a question?
Yes, for, for Mr. Carlisle. Thank you very much. Just to be clear, if this were not rezoned and it remained office, you could put an office building there that was five stories versus the four that's proposed? Am I correct?
Actually, it would be, in that district, it would be three stories at 36 feet.
Three stories?
Yeah, in office, correct.
In an office, but it could be indexed much closer to the property.
That's correct. And there would be no requirement for the increase in the type of screening that this particular applicant has offered as part of their conditional rezoning. The requirement would simply meet, would be to meet the screening requirements in the ordinance, which would be six-foot, yeah, six-foot evergreens or a wall.
Councilman Teetz?
No, I, I think for...
I'm sorry.
It might be helpful to put the PowerPoint presentation to the slide that shows the sightline, because I'm sure that'll be point of discussion. I appreciate seeing that again.
Yep.
That was all.
Other questions for Mr. Carlisle?
I have a question about that particular slide as well. My eyesight's horrible, or that screen's bad, but it looks like 40-foot trees that are going to, is that what I'm seeing there?
No, they're, they're 12 to 15 feet. And the, 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 I'm not exactly sure, Brent, because I'm having trouble seeing that, that also. This was...
It, it looks like 40 on this particular slide.
What it says?
I think it says 40.
And I'm, I guess my question is, you're not going to plant 40-foot trees?
No, no.
They're going to be infantry's, and they'll grow to 40 feet.
That's correct.
And so in, in the meantime, how long does it take a 12-foot tree to grow to 40? What kind of span do you think?
Depends on the type of tree, of course, but, you know, roughly a foot to two a year, depending on the type of tree.
So the, the projection of blocking the, blocking the vision is, is going to be more than that initially, at least for the first 10 years or so?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and one other thing about trees, one of the, we got a, a volume of emails sent to us just in the last couple of days on this, and one of the neighbors suggested that on the north side of the development, that it might be nice to have another set of trees that might block that northern section of the neighborhood a little better, because there's still some homes in that area that can have a visual to there. And, and being, I, I'm a Realtor, so I, you know, I know all about showing somebody a house with, you know, a piece of commercial property in a backyard, but...
Was the reference made to this area up here?
That's the area, yeah.
Okay. Okay. It's understandable.
That's to the north, correct?
Yeah. I did want to point out that, that there is also a screening wall in addition to the evergreen trees, too. So, okay.
The developer here? Could we, could we ask you about those trees to the north end? Is that, is that something you would look at?
Good evening. My name is Victor Soroki. We are the architects for the development, and Akram Namo is here with me, who is the developer with A&amp;M Hospitality. I think, you know, we certainly could look at placing some trees on the north end. It actually came up at the Planning Commission meeting that would we consider even extending the eight-foot screen wall, the length of the last person's property, because the screen wall would actually technically be on our site, but it wouldn't continue all the way across that last parcel because our property ends. And if we were to offset the wall, if the person wanted it on their property, we said we would be agreeable to it. So as it relates to placing some trees on the north end, I think we could look at that. You know, we have to determine how far down we go as we move toward Stevenson. I don't imagine we would be going all the way, but we could go a certain distance, and I think we'd be open to that. And as it relates to the, the 40-foot trees in that site drawing, as was stated and it was submitted on our plan, the trees planted would be a row of evergreen trees and then a row of deciduous trees. Those trees would all be, there are 46 trees in each row. The trees would be 12 to 15 feet in height at planting. The trees, day one, when they're planted, would block the first three floors of the hotel, if you draw the sightlines from the residences. Only the fourth-floor rooms would be exposed, and as Mr. Carlisle said, usually we get one to two feet of growth in a tree. So I would imagine within five to seven years, we would complete that fourth-floor sightline to be blocked completely, to answer your question. If you have any other architectural questions, I'm happy to answer them, or development questions. Mr. Namo is here with any operational questions as well.
Well, we have several residents that have signed up to speak this evening, so if we hear something and we need to, to come back, we can do that. Sir, did you want to say something? Sure. Come, come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Akram Namo. I am the principal developer of this project. Happy Veterans Day. I tip my hat to all the veterans and appreciate all the efforts and sacrifices. I looked at this office building and I purchased it. It's a desolate, empty, has been empty for three years. It's really an eyesore. So I took and thought about developing it and making it more pleasing and more business-attractive proposition. Raising it from a tax base of, purchase price was $1 million, tax base of 500 could be raised to a $5 million tax base. I am in the hospitality business. I do nothing but hotels, one of which is in Troy already, the Hawthorne Suites on Big Beaver and Livernoy. It's a Hawthorne Suites, an extended stay hotel. Basically, we have worked very diligently with the Planning Commission over three months. We were back and forth, and I really appreciate all the efforts and the feedback with the Planning Commission. They worked very hard to, to give us guidelines and guidance to accommodate all the residents. I, I quote a couple of quotes from the, you know, "We went and bent backwards to accommodate, not only to accommodate, but exceed the expectations of all the residents." As the member of staff said, "We went beyond the requirements of the site plan." We were not cheap. We were not tight with landscaping, lighting, providing security, providing privacy. We pushed the buildings up, upward to the street to make it more, to have more distance between the residents and the two buildings. These are two hotels. They are limited service. They are not full-service hotels. By that, I mean they are only bed and breakfast, one of which is an extended stay. You will hardly see the people in and out in an extended stay. I own a hotel in Troy, the Hawthorne Suites. It's been a couple of years, not one police car came to this hotel since we acquired it. We manage and operate hotels in a professional manner. These are Marriott Hotels. They do not have bars. They do not have banquets. They do not have restaurants. So it's very limited services, bed and breakfast, basically. As you know, Marriott's are upscale properties. Marriott has approved this project because of its location and destination to the highway and, and proximity to the other businesses in Troy. My last comment is we are going to employ people from the community. This will attract employment to those hotels. And simply, obviously, there will be a higher tax base to those, to those properties. So I'll be very happy to answer any questions, and simply, we have put a lot of effort and a lot of thought in accommodating the residents and to their privacy and safety, and simply the pleasantness of the atmosphere and the landscaping around the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council or staff? Okay, at this point, there are seven residents that have signed up to speak on this item. I just want to make a comment before we get started, that for those citizens that plan to speak, please review the rules and regulations portion of the agenda, as we do strictly enforce those rules. We have a three-minute time limit that is strictly enforced, and let's keep the, the evening civil, please. Our first resident to speak is Mary Jo Austin. Good evening.
My name's Mary Jo Austin. I live at 242 Redwood. I've been a resident for 48 years. At the last planning board meeting, they said they addressed all the neighbors' concerns. Well, they didn't. We're concerned about the four stories. At the first Planning Commission meeting, one of the commissioners asked the petitioner if they could make it three stories, and they said, "No, absolutely not. Marriott insists on four stories." My question is, if Marriott insists on four stories, why can't the city insist on three stories, which it's zoned for? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Troy resident Kay Vavruska. I hope I didn't butcher that.
Pronounced two different ways.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kay Vavruska. I've lived in my home at 278 Redwood for 54 years, and I love living in Troy. And my, my question is, when Michigan Bell purchased this property... and I love living in Troy. And my question is, when Michigan Bell purchased this property, they removed my wooden fence and they put up a six-foot designer fence, which was nice. And did I understand correctly that you're going to replace it with the eight-foot, I hope?
Yes.
Even though I'm at the northern end?
Ma'am?
Okay.
Please speak to us.
Okay.
It's okay, but...
Because a planning gentleman asked them, "Please, would they do my whole 60 feet?" But I couldn't hear the answer, and then I couldn't speak again after the meeting.
Okay.
So...
There is going to be a new eight-foot?
Yes.
Wall.
Okay, thank you, because I have a crack in my wall.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Troy resident Sally Wilshire. Good evening.
Hi. You guys probably received my letter. I apologize for it being five pages, but I'm just moved into the neighborhood. I love the neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. That's why I can't fathom why someone wants to build two four-story hotels in our neighborhood. It's great. It's like going back when I grew up. It's just a really nice neighborhood. I guess they're saying it's not an eyesore for them, but they don't live behind it. That Michigan Bell building is dark at night. No, we have no problems with anything. I live further down the northern side of this, maybe about three houses down from where it ends. But as far as, like, the fence goes, that's great. They're building an eight-foot wall behind them. I got a wood fence that's fallen down that no one even maintains. So if someone decides they're going to do something, they can probably bust right through that fence. It's very poor condition. The businesses behind me, my other neighbors, three, four houses down, no one's maintained that fence. So that's another issue. I have an eight-year-old daughter. I'm a single parent. I want to know what kind of clientele, what kind of people are going to be coming through our neighborhood, if these are business people and they exercise or whatever. They can be coming through our neighborhood. We don't know. I just have a problem with, why does it have to be four stories? Why can't it be three? If you're going to insist on passing this and rezoning this, this is not good for our neighborhood. I had 70 people sign our petition. Some people could not sign for reasons I cannot disclose. Other people can sign because there are a lot of renters, but there are long-term renters that have lived in that neighborhood, and they don't own the property, but like the neighborhood. I just urge no rezoning. I don't understand why we can't have a restaurant, a university, a tiny, a small family business. It's industrial behind us. We have the Holiday Inn across the street. That's across the street. The noise and everything, that's great. You want to put these trees and all these walls and stuff, but that's not going to stop crime from happening. If crime's going to happen, it's going to happen. It's just going to, you know, people are going to do whatever they want to do. When I first moved into the neighborhood, the police would drive through all the time. I know there's been a decrease in police presence. I don't see that anymore in my neighborhood. I've only lived here just over a year, and I like it. I just, I don't see any, there's the occupancy rate, doesn't justify another hotel. They're building two hotels at 75 and 16 Mile, and I'm sorry. I just, I'm, please reconsider not to rezone this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Troy resident Cynthia Wilshire. Good evening.
Good evening, all. Welcome, Ellen.
Thank you.
My aunt and uncle live there. They've lived there since the subdivision was built, and my daughter lives there. So I'm concerned, and I'm concerned about what's happening in our city with the residential areas. I know we have a lot of empty buildings in Troy. Citizens would like these buildings filled, but not at the expense of our neighborhoods and their quality of life issues. Those in the more affluent areas of Troy, more affluent neighborhoods, don't have this problem because of the master plan that was conceived when the city was designed. They don't have any commercial properties surrounding them, so they're safe from this type of thing. The applicant for the building wants to put two hotels on Stevenson and 14, and he thinks because there's no restaurants or bars in there, it's going to be all peaceful and quiet. I'm an ex-travel agent, and I can tell you that's not the truth. I don't care if you have a bar and a restaurant or not. A lot of people don't use it because it's expensive. They'll go close by and bring their own liquor in, and they will party in their rooms, and especially if they're long-term. And in that neighborhood, the Value Center Shopping Grocery Store is right across the street, like within walking distance, easy walking distance. They have one of the best-stocked coolers with liquor and beer and anything you'd want. I would say probably about 20% of the store is the liquor department there, and they sell a lot of it there. I'm sure anybody that wants to party isn't going to worry that there's not a bar in their hotel because they will bring it in from the outside. There are also seven hotels. Granted, they're in Madison Heights, but it's Kitty Corner. In fact, the applicant owns the Fairfield or is managing the Fairfield Marriott there, Kitty Corner, that will be turned into another hotel chain. I'm sure he wants to move to Troy. He can charge more for the rooms. Do we need four Marriotts in Troy? We're going to have two nice hotels right next door, City Hall on the other side of the freeway. It's in an appropriate area. There's a shopping center there. There's offices there. There's restaurants there, and there are no residents to disturb. I have a thing about the master plan. The master plan was designed to keep things in good order, and I know we're going to change it. But I urge you, please, do not change the zoning on this property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Troy resident Thomas Norton.
Good evening. Mayor Slater, council members. This is very hard to get through this in three minutes. I do note for the record that Rule 17 of procedure allows council to waive the treatment requirement. And given that the applicant seems to have unlimited time to address both the planning commission and this council, I'd ask that you take note of your voters here and waive that requirement. Secondly, this should be a special meeting. That requirement states that where there is significant public input anticipated, Rule 17 allows for a special meeting. I think you have significant input right here in this audience of people opposed to this. I will go to the agreement itself, the conditional rezoning agreement, which is in your packet materials, states a number of items that are inconsistent with Exhibit B materials attached to that agreement. Number one, height requirements. The agreement that you're going to be signing, if you approve this, states four stories of 56 feet. Plans state something different. The memo says four feet, or, sorry, four stories of 69 feet. We've just heard that repeated here tonight. Which height are we voting on? Which limit is it? All of them are too high. Office, three stories, 36 feet is the existing. We're talking about a move to office mixed use, which allows doubling this. We still have to get the final site plan approval. This could go to 75 feet before we get there. That's doubling the height. That's casting a huge shadow across this neighborhood. Number two, the approval by the planning commission noted several conditions, one of which was confirm there is not building lighting above the first floor on the rear and side elevations, and note such on the photometric plan. Please look at your photometric plan. You will see there is no such notation. In addition to that, on the architectural drawings, it still states the option for rear signage and side signage, north and south. That's still there. If you vote tonight, you're voting to approve on those conditions that are in writing. That means we're still going to have lights facing in our neighborhood. Lastly, well, not lastly, but another condition that bothers me is these trees. We've heard about the provision to bend over backwards for the residents for these trees. If you look on the Giffords Webster architectural drawings in your packet, it states quite clearly that there is only a two-year guarantee of maintaining those trees, and there is no requirement to replace them afterwards. Two years isn't enough to get a 12-foot tree started. These trees are central to the notion of mitigating the effects on the neighborhood. The requirement should state that those should be maintained in perpetuity.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
But it's not there. I urge no vote for this and many other reasons.
Our next speaker is Troy resident Suzanne Simonelli. Good evening.
Good evening. My main concerns, first of all, is Madison Heights right now is considering where Troy is, a tenth of a mile, we start the big hotels there on Stevenson Highway. And the problem there is they consider that a high-crime area. There's been a police shooting, the drug deals. We just had human trafficking with a 17-year-old, excuse me, that was held against her will and beaten. Also, in southeast Michigan Crimes Against Children's Task Force has rescued more than 160 local children from sex traffickers, and this is happening throughout the hotels in southeastern Michigan. And this does not, I really want each one of you to think about, would you want this with children, and most of you have children, and they were shown tonight by you talking about your children? It's important. Would you want two hotels backed up to your property? There's no privacy as a woman and as a Christian woman to be, you know, around a pool and with children at the age of nine and 10 and up. What goes on at hotels is, we've got a problem right there. Madison Heights has got a problem. It's very transient at 14 Mile and Stevenson Highway. The business owners have put in complaints about this. There's a lot of riffraff. Most of our seniors will tell you, they don't get gas at the gas station there. It's, you know, we tell them all the time, do not go up there. It's not a safe area, and Madison Heights is, you know, they consider it a high-crime area. And where does a tenth of a mile just change that? And it's, I just ask you to really consider, would you want this in your backyard? We do have a master plan, and why can't we adhere to that master plan? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is resident James Colts.
Good evening. Hello. My issue is height. This plot of land was purchased for, zoned for three stories. Let's keep it that way. Between Stevenson and I-75, yeah, that's an appropriate high-rise corridor. We're not arguing against that. We want, if you go up in a high building anywhere in the city, you look out, you'll see vast areas of single-story, two-story areas, a few little islands of high-rise areas. You wouldn't put the tallest buildings in these areas. At the edges, you'd put them in the center. You would slope down the buildings near the, especially near the residents. There's only been this one three-story building that Bell built. It's not really an eyesore. I mean, it's unused right now, and it needs to be redeveloped, fine, but let's keep it three stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other residents here this evening that wish to speak on this item that have not signed up? Yes, sir. Please state your name. Come to the podium, please.
Redwood 30277, Redwood, veteran. And moved into the neighborhood. I've lived here 70 years in Troy. Graduated in '61. And they're destroying a nice, beautiful community I've moved into. They just, keep it, rezone the way it is. That's my only say about that.
Thank you. Any other residents here, citizens, wish to speak this evening? Close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution and discussion. Councilman Fleming?
Just, one of the residents brought up the confirming the height of the building. Could we just, again, see that and reconfirm the height of the building so there's no confusion in what we're approving tonight? Again, I know we saw it, but just want to make sure that what we're approving tonight is, if we approve it, is the height, what we're voting on?
Yeah, it was as I previously indicated to the commission or to the council, four stories, 69 feet for both buildings.
69 feet.
Did you hear the comments from Mr. Norton about the lighting and some of those...
I was having a little difficulty hearing what the gentleman was saying. I had the photometric plan.
Maybe if we could get the developer to come back up here, the architect. He spoke about the lighting. There are two signs on each end that were inconsistent, and he talked about the height that was inconsistent with the plans. My notes also indicate a couple of other things that he said were inconsistent. If you could just address those, please.
So at the planning commission meeting, we were asked to not provide a sign on the rear of the building. We said absolutely we would not be putting a sign at the rear of the building, that the sign would be on the front of the building.
Can you move the microphone over, please? Thank you.
That the sign would be on the front of the building. We did not address the sides of the building. We certainly could talk about that. The primary sign for us, obviously, is on the front. We would not have a sign on the rear. There was no other lighting above the first floor. The only other lighting on the first floor is really at doorways, which is required by code. I will make a clarification as it relates to height. The buildings are actually lower than what is stated. You know, there's actually two different building types. There's the Fairfield Inn, which is basically a flat-roofed building. In the center, the Fairfield Inn is about 52 feet in height. That's the highest point. The majority of the building is actually at 42 feet, so it's quite a bit less than what is permitted. And the other building is the Town Place, which is the Extended Stay Building. That has a sloped roof condition, more like a residential building. And the highest point at the middle of that is 57 feet. I believe in Troy, do we measure the midpoint of the roof, the height to the midpoint of the roof? So actually, if we were to measure to the midpoint of the roof, it would only be 49 feet at the highest point, and the majority of the building is lower, would actually be 44 feet at the midpoint. So it's quite a bit less. It's not anywhere near what's permitted in the OM. We're happy to stay with the heights I just proposed or I just stated. That is on our drawings, and it is what Marriott requires. So we are very comfortable in keeping these buildings much lower than what was thought to be. You know, I'll just make another point with a notation on the Giffords Webster drawing. You talked about the two-year warranty on trees. That is a contractor's warranty, and that's sort of a technical warranty for the planting of trees. I know Mr. Akram Namo would be happy to make sure that the warranty goes way beyond that, and that if trees did not survive, he would plant new trees, and that could be a condition of the approval. So, you know, it's our intentions to make sure that we provide a nice, solid buffer. Was there any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Henderson?
One more time, can you clarify the height of both buildings? Because initially, we heard it was four...
Because initially, we heard it was four stories, 69 feet, but you're significantly lower than that.
We are.
So just, so I can have some clarity there.
The Fairfield Inn is a flat-roofed building. The flat-roofed building has basically two heights. In the middle, it's a little taller, that's how these buildings all are. It's 52 feet to the highest part of the flat roof, and the majority of it is 42 feet. That's the lower building. The building that's a little taller is the Town Place Suites, because it has pitched roofs. If we measure to the midpoint of the roof, which is the way the ordinance measures on a pitched-roofed building, the highest point is 49 feet at the center, and the majority of the roof is 44 feet at the center. Again, measuring from the eve to the ridge, that's the way you measure a sloped-roofed building.
Can I have a follow-up?
Sure.
The, what, if we were not to go with a hotel, and I don't know who to direct this to, if we weren't going to go with a hotel, it didn't do anything tonight, and somebody else bought that, what would be the maximum height somebody could put a building on it, piece of property?
Mr. Miller?
Three stories, 36 feet.
Three stories, 36 feet.
The current zoning.
So that's a half a foot lower than this?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, this is 42? Well, we're at, again, we've got two different buildings, two different heights. Essentially, we're one story taller.
In addition to that, they could also put it significantly closer to the lot line, so.
Correct. We're more than three times, our green belt is over 50 feet in width, just the green belt, and that's how close a building could be, 50 feet from the rear property line, that's the requirement. We're about 180 feet from the property line, so we're more than three times the required setback. And as Mr. Nama said, we worked very close with staff and the planning commission to move the buildings as forward to Stevenson Highway, to front Stevenson Highway, the way they should, as we could, to have that very large setback.
Councilwoman Hoderick?
There were some questions about security, and I think they're very legitimate questions. I do want to comment that there can be a false sense of security with an office building. Just because it's an office building, it doesn't mean that there aren't security issues. I work in corporate security, so I want to just say that. I want you to understand I'm empathizing, and I think the security question is very legitimate, but a restaurant or another office building that is significantly closer to the neighborhood isn't necessarily going to be safer than what's proposed here. I just, I just want to say that out loud, based on what I see on a day-to-day basis and how I make a living. Now, having said that, these questions are very legitimate, and I heard you guys say the word "security plans" in there, and you talked about the current hotel you have in Troy and the security that you have. Can you talk to us about that for a moment, what your plans are?
Yes. First of all, we are involved in the hospitality business. We do value and appreciate security, because in any business, if you don't have security, that business is a failing one. I brought an example that I own and operate, the Hawthorne Suites in Troy, which is on Big Beaver and Liver Noise Road, and I've been there almost two years, and we have not had one issue of security in that vicinity or in that property. It is 152 units, it's over seven acres of land, and we, you know, we have extended-stay people that come and go, and the record will show that we have not had one police car coming to that project for any security purposes. So the hotels are usually manned, there's a front desk 24 hours, so there's always somebody there to watch the hotel, too. So beside, you know, it's not like an office building, and they close at, you know, at six or seven o'clock, and so there's always people around. So the security is inherent within the hotel business, and there's always people that are, you know, front desk people, cleaners, so there's, really, the security is embodied within the hotel. So, plus, we are in the business, so we value that point very much so, and I do appreciate that. Otherwise, any hotel without security is a failing one, and definitely it will be, you know, a losing one. So we definitely know what we are doing, we have, we value that point very much so.
Follow-up, you have a follow-up question?
If I can?
Sure.
I thought I heard someone say that if it stayed current zoning, that the wall, there would, there wouldn't necessarily be the walls and trees. So if we kept the current zoning and office building went in, we would only be potentially 50 feet away from this neighborhood, and that current zoning doesn't require trees or, I heard you say something, and I want to get it in my head.
Yeah, under the, under the current ordinance, the, of course, landscape screening would be required, but the, but the standard to which they would be held is not as stringent as what they're offering. It's basically a six-foot screening. And the, again, as of right, under that district, the rear yard setback is only 50 feet.
So let's say we said no, and a year from now, an office developer came in. There is nothing in the zoning that would require what they're putting forward now in terms of that, that rear space?
That's correct.
And in terms of a double, a double-
There would be screening required, yes.
But not?
Not to the extent that they're offering.
So we would be crossing our fingers that the next developer would offer that to this neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay.
But let's be fair here. There is an office building already there, so it probably would get reused where it is at its location, and we could require additional buffering even if it was bought under other conditions. We're not permanently restricted from, from what the requirements are for the ordinance.
We could ask them.
We could ask for more.
Okay.
You could, but the ordinance wouldn't require it.
The ordinance wouldn't require it, so. Any other questions for staff or the architect or the developer? Mayor Protem Henderson?
I don't want to necessarily put the chief on the spot, but is there any kind of information maybe that he could provide about other hotels in the area and security issues that we may have? I mean, are there extraordinary circumstances surrounding hotels in Troy? He may not be prepared, so I apologize for that.
City manager Kishnik, should we put the chief on the spot, or do you think we should give him a?
I don't know that we've, we've not talked about that, but if the chief is prepared, he usually is, and he usually has something worthwhile to say.
You can thank me tomorrow for that.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I'll maybe throw my two cents in, too.
Well, Mayor, I defer to you to go first.
Well, I've been out of the business for some years, I'll defer, but, you know, everything that we do attracts the potential criminal, no matter what we do. It's not, it's not singled out for hotels, it's issues at malls, it's issues at offices. I would say that hotels are no different than anywhere else as far as crime goes. And crime prevention, hardened target, are all issues that should be addressed with anything, so that's my two cents.
I, of course, would concur with that. We're very, very fortunate in Troy to have higher caliber hotels. The higher caliber hotels tend not to have difficulties. We are seeing some, the one lady mentioned this stuff with some human trafficking, there is more knowledge with human trafficking issues. At this point, there's nothing to support that that occurs in Troy on a regular basis, but it would be erroneous to say it never happens, because it happens because we have hotels. Every hotel around probably has some aspect of prostitution and some phone call stuff, everyone does. These higher established, the higher caliber ones tend not to have them to the same degree, so almost nil. We're very fortunate in this town. I don't have the data available with me. I tried calling dispatch to get some immediate data to buttress the claim I heard about the 2,600 Liver Noise. I don't have that data available at this time, we could get that. We, we are, there's a difference in the police being in a location and talking to people that a owner may not even know we were there. So we get into all our hotels and all our parking lots routinely, that's what we do. So we're there, and there could be contacts, that doesn't necessarily reflect anything, because we're in all the hotels and all the parking lots within the city. So to get right to the point, with this hotel location, I could not say that we'd have an increase in crime because of it. We have an increase in activity whenever we build something, no matter what it is, if it's a Coney Island to a retail establishment. So I could, I could go on more, but it would all be speculative at this point, but.
Appreciate it.
Hopefully answered the question. Thank you. It's safe to say that the police department does have a strong relationship with all hotels, and they've, they've always had a good relationship with the desk and desk personnel also. Would somebody like to move the resolution so we can get some further discussion on this? Okay, Mr. Councilman Teetz?
My one, my one question for developers, you know, this is a high-end hotel, this is not a $50 night or per hour, I mean, this is a high-end hotel, so we're going to get good clientele into this facility. I mean, I'm wondering what the rate would be.
If a developer could, could answer that? Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely and positively. This is two high-end hotels. They are Marriott, top-of-the-nudge franchise, and very much upscale, your rates will be over $100 plus. So strictly really business people. It caters for extended, extended-stay business people as well as transient business people. So it's corporate-based hotels, high-end hotels, really in and out, very professional people. That's my experience. And I own and operate other Marriott's properties, so, thank you.
You going to move it?
Yeah.
Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, to get this on the table for further discussion with the council, I'm going to move this resolution, E2, conditional rezoning application as printed.
I support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Mayor Protem Henderson, that we approve E2 as printed. I have a couple, if I-
Please, go ahead.
I would like to amend this to include the condition of the trees. That you spoke about that there would be a warranty for more than two years. What would be reasonable? Could I defer to Mr. Miller?
I would say Mr. Carlisle and Mr. Sall.
Could you repeat the question, Mr. Mayor Slater?
I'd like to amend the resolution to include a longer warranty on the trees and replacement of trees that fail or die. So if there's a two-year warranty, what, five years? What I want, what I'm trying to protect here is, most of the discussion that I heard from the residents tonight deal with the four stories, the site, the buffer, all of those things, so we don't want to see an eight-foot wall in three years crumble, as indicated with a fence that was, we want some reliability that this buffer is going to be there for forever.
I'd answer that in a couple ways. First of all, we, we, we being planning and code enforcement, look at landscaping like we do as, as any other site improvement, a dumpster, a building, a driveway striping, et cetera. If the site plan shows a tree, and that tree is planted, and two, three, five, 10 years later, excuse me, that tree's gone, we will enforce and require that that tree be replaced at a, at a height as high as we can to get the same effect as a tree that died. That being said, if you want to, again, this is, I'm stepping on Lori's toes a little bit, I just want to be clear that, or be, make sure that this has got to be voluntarily offered by the petitioner. If they're okay with the suggestion that this be a five-year period versus a two-year, and they want to voluntarily offer that, that, I think that's a great idea. But, but again, I'm okay with it remaining as two, because we enforce, and we'll make sure that it, that we do maintain that buffer.
Okay. City attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And another thing, too, is that there is an agreement that does provide for, you know, certain elements. So that, again, provides additional language that would support the code enforcement's efforts to require the replacement of any trees if they were to die, or if the wall is crumbling, code enforcement can rely on the agreement, the conditional rezoning agreement. After having said that, however, the applicant has offered to offer up to five years, and so if you wanted to include that in your resolution, I think there's also an offer about trees to the north as well.
Right, that was my next point, the north trees.
And, and so if the applicant, you know, could confirm that he is willing to offer those, you could put that in the resolution, and then also make those changes to the agreement as well.
Would the developer be willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to amend the resolution to include that language then for, for trees, five-year warranty, and trees to the north end of the development as a buffer. Further discussion?
Wasn't, wasn't there also discussion of extending the wall as best as the property lines allow, and that's already in?
It's already in. City clerk Bittner?
Mayor, you need a second for the amendment.
I'll sec.
Well, it's moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Fleming, that we add the conditions of the trees, warranty, and buffer to the north.
This vote will just be for the amendment, and then we'll have another vote for the entire thing as amended.
Correct. Any other discussion, though, at this point? I just, before the vote, I just want to let the residents know that we read everything that was supplied, we took a look at all of the data, took a look at, I personally looked at all the planning commission meetings. I understand it's something that, this is one of the more difficult decisions that this council has to make when it comes to residents that back up, but it's something that we hear almost at every development. And I personally looked at it, I checked all of the data, listened to the comments tonight, and I think the buffer is going to work, and that's why, that's why I'm voting The vote on the amendment, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes, and now the vote on-
There is to be a move and a second on the amended, yeah.
I'll move the amendment, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Is there any discussion on that? Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yeah, I also am going to vote in favor of this, and, you know, it's, these are always heart-wrenching, and you use the barometer of, you know, would I want this in my backyard? Not, you know, I probably wouldn't, but in this particular situation, you have a commercial area, and if we don't approve this, and two years from now, another commercial development comes along, it could be worse than this situation. And I don't see this as really a bad situation, considering the entire area. So again, I, I- So, again, I support local business as well in this particular situation.
Any other discussion? Councilman Teetz?
Agree with those statements, but want to also thank the developer for putting so much effort into this and trying to be flexible with what the residents have asked for. I think just moving the property so far forward towards the highway there is going to be a great addition to the appearance from the highway and also hopefully alleviate some of those concerns. So, really appreciate that, and look forward to the grand opening and so forth, so, thanks.
Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck, and welcome to Troy. Thank you. Please make the residents feel welcome. Thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute recess at this point.
Back in session, please take your seats. Our next item of business is public comment for items on the agenda. And we have ten or eleven residents have signed up to speak on I four. So if I could, before we start, try to make a little bit of an informational on that item. Because I think there's been a misrepresentation that has been supplied about I four. It is not the intent of this body to change the ordinance that was established in nineteen sixty-six. The only part of that ordinance that is going to be up for change this evening is to allow for forty-eight hours before you have to shovel your sidewalk and for the amount to be three inches. That is it. We are not changing the ordinance any differently than it has been since nineteen sixty-six, except we ask for an exclusionary point for sidewalks that are within thirty-six inches of a main thoroughfare. So if somebody has told you that we intend to change the ordinance this evening to require people to shovel a sidewalk that is on a main road portion of their property, that is not the intent of this ordinance change this evening. There is no change since this ordinance was put into effect since nineteen sixty-six. Now, we've gotten a lot of correspondence from many residents and somebody's been supplying information that we intend to change that ordinance this evening, and that's not correct. So if you would please keep that in mind when you come up to the podium to speak on I four, we are not changing the ordinance to require anything different than has been in place since nineteen sixty-six, except for you have forty-eight hours to shovel your walk and the amount of snow is three inches you will be required to clear your sidewalk. And having said that, please pay attention to public comment rules and regulations that are printed in the agenda. I did read them last time, but let's just pay attention to the rules. And let's be civil this evening. Our first resident to speak is John Wire to speak on I four. Good evening.
Good evening, Councilmen, Mr. Mayor, City Manager. I am the one that put out the letter. And what I stated was the Troy City Council plans to amend the snow removal ordinance to make residents with rear property lines adjacent to major roads responsible for sidewalk snow removal on those roads. That is in error. The error is that these ordinance, thirty-four eleven, actually it's city code, has required that since nineteen sixty-six. But it has not been enforced since nineteen seventy-three until approximately two thousand and eight. So I question that the ordinance does apply to the properties we're talking about. I talked to City Manager Brian Kryznik Kryznik, on Thursday, Kryznik? Okay, Kryznik on Thursday, the chairman said, he informed me that changing the ordinance was not the council what the council was trying to do. He stated the ordinance already requires residents to remove snow on walks behind their property. He is correct, but the ordinance was written in the early sixties when none of these properties in question existed and not necessarily intended to apply them, to apply to them. I was informed in nineteen seventy-three by a city official that Long Lake Road was the city's responsibility even though the ordinance was in place at the time. I contend that even the city, from nineteen seventy-three into approximately two thousand and eight, considered it unreasonable to require homeowners to clear snow on main roads they did not reside reside on. I have five reasons that all these properties should be exempted. It is a tax shift to four hundred and thirty-three thousand, that would have been last year's plate cost, from this entire city tax base to approximately seven hundred citizens. This is equivalent to a fifty-four percent tax increase to me for my portion. Second reason, labor burden is too great if residents have to do it themselves. Third reason, residents who back up to main roads do not get any more benefit from them than every other sitting make citizen, making them servants to the city and other residents. Fourth reason, most of these parcels do not have access for various reasons. Fences, berms, trees, and/or shrubs, and excessive travel distances to access. Fifth reason, unjustifiable property devaluations because many buyers will simply ignore these properties when they learn of this burden. I am requesting the city council be reasonable and amend city code thirty-four point one-one for all the above reasons to read. Parcels with rear property lines adjoining main roads with sidewalks are exempt from city code thirty-four point one-one. I'd like to ask the council, is it your intention to make us clear these roads at any point in time for any reason? Or are we looking for another solution? Because I've talked to many people this past week, we're going around the city handing these out. There's people that can't get to them, there's people who can't even find a contractor that wants to do them because it's too hard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please, no applause, please. I will make a comment after that. It is not the intent of this council to enforce anything that that hasn't been enforced in the past, okay? It's not our intent to direct city administration to go out and enforce that ordinance. Our next resident to speak is Mr. Ashraf Gali. Is he here this evening? Resident Jack Cushing to speak on I four.
Mr. Mayor, City Council?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking about the pure Troy issue. It's a hard act to follow. The gentleman just preceded me, but to make a few points of what he said. When I moved in in nineteen seventy-four, I was informed that I was not responsible for the sidewalk adjacent to my property on Coolidge and Waddles. And it had been plowed by the city while I lived there, as well as mode, but we're talking about snow now, which I agree with the mayor when he brought this up at the study session, that we should be addressing snow before it fell. Unfortunately, it fell today, so we're a little late. However, the city at that time informed me it was the city's responsibility, and particularly because they mandated a green belt, which now blocks me from getting from my property to there, as well as people along the line. And in the study session and in talking to people on the dais afterwards, it was stated that there would be exemptions on an individual basis. However, reading this piece of paper that came from the city manager, it says that all three of the list of items have to be met in order to be gain an exemption, and one of them is the sidewalk has to be thirty-six inches from the from the street. I've gone around measuring sidewalks and I can't find one except where a couple of places where they go around a tree, where you get anywhere near thirty-six inches from the street. So in my mind, this is a way of keeping anybody from getting an exemption. And what I feel is that we should readdress the situation so that we have a credible means of asking for and being granted an exemption. Unfortunately, the people that I was contacting and so forth, we all sent things to the city council indicating what we thought was a good format for exemptions and so forth. And I was informed that that came too soon. I'm sorry that it did. However, the primary situation that I'm addressing now is that even though I submitted the, Larry and I submitted this letter in January, and it took a couple of months to pry it out of the city manager's office to get it to you, ladies and gentlemen, you finally got it, and thank you, Mayor Slater, for bringing it up and saying it should be addressed before the snow falls. And we're only missing it by a little bit, but the only point I'd like to make and stress again is that there should be a credible, reasonable way of people being able to get an exemption. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to the country. Once again, this council does not intend to enforce the shoveling of the sidewalks that are adjacent to the main roads and change the ordinance in any fashion. And I think you'll see in the presentation of I four that there are sidewalks that do get within thirty-six inches of the roadway. There's a map, I believe, that will be displayed showing those sidewalks. Our next resident to speak is John Rapsen, Troy resident to speak on I four. Thank you. Our next speaker is Earl Williams, Troy resident to speak on I four. Paul Malley, Troy resident to speak on I four. Thank you. Resident Ron DeKersey to speak on I four. Ronald Neve, Troy resident to speak on I four. Good evening.
And the council. This is my second meeting that I have attended. I was at the May twenty-first meeting, and I kind of laid out my unique situation that I have. This amendment that you mentioned tonight where it's three inches now is going to make that job even tougher for me because of a hundred and eighty feet that I have to take a snow blower from my garage to get to Libranui. You and Councilman Teetz asked for additional information. I forwarded an email to you. I did not receive any acknowledgement that you did receive it. I was hoping to get some feedback and maybe a request for some additional information. Did not happen. I hope it didn't fall on deaf ears. I've been fighting this for over three years now. Like I say, I have an excess of two hundred feet of sidewalk to clear and a hundred and eighty feet of cross-country to get to it. So like I say, the three inches, if I get six or seven or eight or nine inches of snow in my backyard and have to get out there to clean it, it's going to be nearly impossible to do. So I'm definitely looking for some relief and would appreciate if you could do that for me.
I could just ask you to speak with City Manager Kishnik after the meeting this evening? Because I think a correspondence went to every resident that sent an email regarding this item.
I had not received anything as of today.
It was our hopes that they were all answered, so.
It was just an acknowledgement that you did receive it, like I'm saying. I did have a problem with you because you threw me a little curveball there with an AOL email address, but it bounced back and I forwarded it to you and to Councilman Teetz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy resident Mustafa Salawala? Yes, thank you. Troy resident Jerry Harbu? Harubin? Harubin? Good evening.
Yes, I got John's email or letter shoved in the door. And it comes down to sidewalks and driveway approaches. If I want to get out to the back of my property, I can go slide down the hill between the trees and then I can get to the sidewalk. It's less than, it's more than thirty-six inches from where the street is, but I never see hardly ever see people walking down there. And that's the whole point. I have no easy, I've got, I only pay two hundred and fifty dollars a year to clear your walk in front of my house, the driveway, the porch, the walk to the house. And when I looked at that estimate of four hundred and eleven dollars, I'm thinking, okay, there's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars the city of Troy has to spend because we're going to be all coughing up this money to pay two hundred, four hundred and eleven dollars. Now, if that's some average that John may or not have had accurate information on, that would be interesting to know. But I thought it was extremely outrageous that we would have to do, pay special things just because we happen to back up to a city main street. I think that's like taxation without representation because that represents almost ten percent of my tax bill. And I looked at that and I thought something's wrong with this picture. And because if you read it, it's sidewalks and driveway approaches. There is no driveway or sidewalk approach to my residence or my neighbor's residences off that piece of sidewalk along Coolidge. Everybody's got the same issue. We're all on a hill, we all drop down, we all crawl through trees. And we all have the trees there as a windbreak. So I, you know, because I didn't see the earlier issues on this, I didn't see a copy of what was actually attached, the original minutes of the meeting, which would be really nice to see. And is that still available online? Do you know? Does anybody know?
Yes.
Okay, do you know when the original meeting?
The city clerk just nodded yes to me, so.
I'm sorry?
The city clerk just nodded yes to me, so it is online.
Okay, is it, do you know approximately what date that would be?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
But if you call my office tomorrow, I can walk you through how to get to it on the website.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the residents have signed up to speak on this item. Well, there will be a discussion when it comes up by four. But I want the residents to understand, we're trying to make this easier, not more complicated for the residents. And there is no intent to make you go around a block to shovel a sidewalk on a main street. And we are not changing the ordinance to make it any different than it was in nineteen sixty-six. And we are not instructing the administration to go out and look for violations. They do not do that. Our next order of business is response to public comments, so is anyone from city staff wish to just say more than I did? City Manager Kishnik?
The only thing I would say to Mr. Cushing, because he did call me by name, that the memo was not from me, it was to me, from staff. And it was, and it was a culmination of many, many meetings. It wasn't my attempt to make sure that every resident has to shovel their snow as was indicated. It was my attempt to work with the city council and staff and the residents who brought this to our attention to provide relief in the, on this difficult, seemingly difficult issue. So it was a memo from staff as a result of all their hard work and not from me.
I'm sorry, it's been concluded, the discussion has been concluded. There's an opportunity to sign up to speak. You have to follow the procedure to sign up to speak. The only other thing that I have to say is that when we looked at, when we looked at this, we were looking for ways to go back to nineteen, or two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, when the city did do some some of the sidewalks. When we took budget cuts, we did away with that. It's our intent at the November twenty-fifth meeting study session to revisit some of the cuts that were made. And we are going to be looking at, possibly looking at doing some of the sidewalks where kids have to walk to school. That is something we're going to take a look at. But at no point do we want to change the ordinance to require the citizens to have to go and shovel those walks that are almost impossible to get to. And it's not our intent to tell the administration to enforce those, that ordinance. And you have that on tape this evening. I'm sorry, that concludes the discussion on this.
Mr. Mayor, let's just move on. It's just a couple spots down on the agenda, and we'll have lots of opinions, lots of discussions. So we'll just move on.
We're going to, we're going to talk about it, but the public's discussion on that is over at this point. So we're going to move on to postponed items. There are none, which takes us to regular business. Our first order of business is I one, board and committee appointments. There are no mayoral appointments.
They should stay.
They should stay.
Speak up.
We are going to get to I four pretty soon if you want to stick around to hear the discussion on it. Maybe we answered their questions.
Maybe you answered their question.
Correct. Item I one B is city council appointments and you know, Councilman Fleming, you started the appointment for Parks and Rec. If you want to finish it, that would be okay with me.
Okay, may it resolve that Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. And here we're talking about the Troy Parks and Recreation Board. We have two people that are appointing tonight. Carolyn Noble for a term expiring September the thirty, two thousand and sixteen. David Bloom for a term expiring July the thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell that we nominate Carol Noble for the term to expire nine thirty, two thousand and sixteen, and David Bloom for the term that expires on seven thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Binner.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item of business is I three, a request for closed session, and there was also a yellow sheet placed on the table this evening. If we could include both of those resolutions on the request for closed session. Councilman Campbell?
Yes, I'll move forward the request for closed session on both the items as they are printed. Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell and supported by Councilman Fleming that we approve I three, both requests as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Binner.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. I four is pure Troy snow maintenance to be introduced by our planning director, Brent Savanon. Good evening again.
Good evening again. Pure Troy. I wish I had a voice like Tim Allen. Unfortunately, I don't. You will recall, September ninth, two thousand and thirteen, there was a city council study session where Paul Evans, who's here this evening, presented a fifty-two slide PowerPoint presentation, very professionally done, very thorough, which, and he led a discussion on right-of-way maintenance, including right-of-way mowing and right-of-way snow removal from public sidewalks. This evening, we are going to focus on snow removal. We're not going to talk about the grass cutting. The reason is, snow removal at the study, at the study meeting generated the most conversation, most dialogue. And also, it's November eleventh and the snow is I saw some today. It's coming. And what the discussion is really focusing on sidewalks that are but major thoroughfares, specifically those for one and family, two, one and two-family residential areas as regulated by chapter thirty-four. Now, the point's been driven home pretty hard tonight, and I'll just put, I'll just hit it one more time. There was a letter and a form that was distributed to a number of residents in the area kind of insinuating, well, actually stating that city council was going to make changes to the ordinance to vigorously enforce add requirements for maintenance. City did not prepare this letter, nothing to do with the letter. And in fact, the discussion this evening is centering on relief of the existing chapter thirty-four, which, as you noted, Mayor Slater, has been in existence since two thousand, excuse me, since nineteen sixty-six with some only minor grammatical errors in two thousand and two. So stating the obvious, the requirement to shovel sidewalks abutting residential properties has been in existence since nineteen sixty-six. It's nothing new. Not going to regurgitate all fifty-two slides, but just some, some points as a refresher to kind of keep everyone on the same page. Enforcement of chapter thirty-four regarding sidewalk snow removal is complaint-based, okay? We are reactive, we are not proactive, we do not proactively seek out violations of this ordinance. If someone presently lives in a home that has a sidewalk on the right-of-way and they've never been contacted by the city, it means we've never received a violation, we've never approached anybody. So again, it's very, very reactive and not proactive. There are five hundred and twenty-six miles of sidewalk in Troy. Of those five hundred and twenty-six miles, almost a hundred and forty-two miles of sidewalk are adjacent to main roads. Of those a hundred and forty-one and a half miles of sidewalk adjacent to main roads, slightly over twenty miles are abutting residential properties and have rear yard sidewalks. So twenty miles of sidewalks, pretty significant. As we talked about at the study meeting, defining difficult sidewalks is very, is difficult, in and of itself is difficult. Paul showed some examples in his PowerPoint of difficult sidewalks, and it generated some, some conversation. We really didn't get consensus on a lot of these. So there's some examples up here. We see thick vegetation can be a constraint to mowing property. Deep rear yards, here you see a house that's significant distance from the, from the right-of-way. Privacy fences, obviously you can't go over or through the fence, you've got to, you've got to go around it. It adds considerable distance and challenge. A combination of slope and vegetation, again, making, making it challenging to maintain. Here's another example of a privacy fence. The slide on the right, proximity to the road. This, this issue generated the most consensus at the meeting where, what I mean by that is there was a lot of head nodding and a lot of, a lot of acceptance by council that for properties that were either the edge of pavement was, was right next to the sidewalk or up to three feet from the sidewalk, this was a challenge. The reason for that is, snowplows throw snow about three, up to three feet. And we talked about, you know, the person who goes out, shovels, shovels the the sidewalk after a snowfall, goes back into the garage, hangs a shovel up, does one of these, and along comes a snowplow and wham, oh, he's got four or five inches of snow in there in violation. That, we all agreed that that was, that was a difficult sidewalk. We didn't get consensus on the other ones, but you know, the intent of the proposed language just before this evening is discussion- proposed language just before this evening is discussion, and we tried to really zero in on what, what consensus was based on that dialogue. So changes proposed for chapter thirty-four, which is in everyone's packet. So as, as Mayor Slater indicated, the first change is that residents would have forty-eight hours following the end of a snow event to clear their sidewalks. Presently, when there's a snowfall, residents have within twelve hours to shovel, or by six P.M. of the day following, if the event ceased during the night time, during nighttime. So it essentially gives you from between a day and a day and a half more time to shovel, which is, which is relief. So that's one form of relief that was suggested at the meeting. Secondly, residents would not be required to clear their sidewalks of snow until the depth of the snow was three inches or greater. And presently, the requirement is that sidewalk shall be kept clear of ice and snow. Now, the requirement to keep sidewalks free of ice, we're, we're going to maintain, proposed, but there was a resident that, that mentioned that even a dusting, by, by ordinance, you're required to clear the sidewalk of a dusting. This provides more relief because now the threshold is three inches. That's, that's a second way that, that the proposed language grants relief. The third is to actually define difficult sidewalks. And the way that the, that the proposed language defines difficult sidewalks is you've got to meet all of three criteria. The first is that the property in question has to be a one- or two-family residence. Secondly, it must be addressed on an interior street, but has a side or rear yard abutting a major thoroughfare. You know, we're not, we're talking about the, the rear and the side yards that are difficult to get to. And thirdly, the sidewalk must be located less than thirty-six inches from the edge of pavement of a major thoroughfare. And again, that's, that's, that speaks to the, the snowplow dumping snow on these sidewalks after they're cleared. Presently, there are no exceptions to this chapter thirty-four, so this would be an exception. So that's three, three ways that the, the proposed language grants relief. I would mention, I, I didn't put a slide up here because I tried to keep the, I didn't want to go, you know, past fifteen slides or whatever I have. Another way that, that there's, there's, in a sense, that there's relief, is that presently, if we, if, if someone is in violation, and we do receive a complaint, and we, we pursue the complaint, we notify by way of certified mail. So what happens is, someone comes home, they get a, a notice that there's a certified letter for them to sign for. They have to drive to the post office to sign for it, to be informed they're in violation of the ordinance. So the person's already mad they have to go to the post office, and then they get bad news. So what, what the, the proposed language allows for is, is notifying people through first-class mail, which saves money and is just less of a burden on the, on the, the resident. Based on our definition of difficult sidewalks, there's about thirty-one hundred and seventy linear feet of difficult sidewalks, they're shown here on the map in red. You see, there's a number of them on Crooks and a number of them on Rochester Road. Based on present contractor cost per linear foot, if we had a three-inch to six-inch snowfall, the cost to shovel the thirty-one hundred and seventy linear feet of sidewalk would be three hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. If it was six inches or greater, the cost would be five hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents per snow event. And that's just to clear those, those exceptions. Now, you've heard a lot of comments, this, this is definitely a hot button. Based on input, we've got draft language, there is an alternative solution, that's been mentioned by a number of people this evening. We've got correspondence from a lot, a number of people through email, letters, phone calls, et cetera, to exempt all parcels on major thoroughfares. I mean, that, that's really up to you. If all parcels are exempted, and there's no enforcement, then either they're not going to get shoveled, or they're going to be shoveled by the city, all, or, or some of them are going to be shoveled by the city at whatever expense that may be. Any city expenditure on snow removal for these parcels would need to be determined through the budget process. So to summarize, increasing the threshold for time in snow depth allows more leniency for snow removal, and so does providing exemptions, provides more leniency for snow removal. And that's the presentation, and we can talk about this if you'd like, Mayor Slater.
Thank you. Councilman Campbell?
You know, just offhand, how many violations the city of Troy sent out last year?
Paul Evans was on his way.
We had four hundred and eleven contacts in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. Some of these could have been verbal, some of these could have been letters, combination thereof, but those were the number of contacts we had during that time period.
And was it all because of complaints?
Yes.
Councilman Fleming?
Follow-up for that, Mr., they want you to move the mic closer to you, they're falling, I can't hear you. Mr. Evans, these complaints, these four and eleven complaints, I know you and I had a conversation once, or, some people bike during the winter time, they bike these sidewalks, some people jog. These four hundred and eleven complaints, some of these could have been from the same person multiple times?
Oh, yes.
Multiple times?
Yes, that's possible.
That's very possible.
Yes, definitely.
Every time it snows, that the person rides a bicycle or jogs, comes into your office and complains about sidewalks, or maybe people that do that.
Yeah, we, it's not, it's not common, but then again, it's not uncommon for individuals to be focused on snow removal and be a frequent contactor to the city to request enforcement action. It's not unheard of for people to call and say, I, I live in the Oakland Park Towers, and the entire stretch of John R. from fourteen mile to fifteen mile is not passable, we need you to address that. So that could be one way that we get up to four hundred and eleven quickly. And it's not necessarily four hundred and eleven residences, and it could be potentially repeat offenders, although last year it wasn't repeat offenders.
Councilman Teetz?
This sidewalk change or, or change, and I disagree with what the mayor said, because it is, it is a change, we're changing how it'll read, but it would affect all sidewalks in the, the city, correct?
Right.
Is it, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Because that, that's a huge problem that I've been thinking about, because as children are walking to their schools inside of these subdivisions, we are creating a new problem in addition to the problem that we might be solving, because I don't think any parents or, or any residents want to see kids walking through, you know, three inches of snow for forty-eight hours. I mean, you could stop snowing Monday morning, and it would be till Wednesday, till the snow would be picked up. And so I'm, that's, that's one major concern, and so I, I wanted to make sure that we're, that I understood that correctly.
Just as a clarification, I did not say that there were no changes. I said the forty-eight hours, the three inches, and the minor exemptions were the only changes. Mayor Pro Tem Henderson?
You may or may not have this off the top of your head, but you say four hundred and eleven complaints last year. Any, any idea how many were on the same property, and secondarily, how many were on main roads?
I can say that none of them, well, none of them were on the same property, because if they were on the same property, the second time we receive a complaint, because the property owner's already been advised, we would send a contractor out to plow, and we didn't have any, any situations last year where we had to plow any sidewalks.
So they were all individual, specific?
Right.
Unique situations. And then, again, the follow-up, how many on, on main roads?
I don't have the information broken down that specific.
Councilman Pennington?
So of those four hundred and eleven violations, was, there were no fines issued, and were there any charges, you know, to the taxpayers on their?
No fines, no charges.
Okay.
Councilman Teetz?
This is more for our discussion purposes, so not particularly a question. It, it seems to me that we're creating a new problem by setting this, this new standard inside the subdivisions. I, I don't think anybody wants more snow on the sidewalks when children are trying to go to school and so forth. In the same way, I don't think we're solving the problem on the main roads either, because we're simply trying to accommodate these, these folks that do complain and complain frequently, that they need a mile of sidewalk cleared off. So I, I'm all for the, what was mentioned here, exempting all of the parcels on major thoroughfares, their sidewalks, and simply maintain the ordinance as it currently reads, because I don't think anyone is complaining inside subdivisions that they don't, that it's a burden upon them to clear off the seventy or eighty feet of sidewalk in front of their house. So I want to encourage the city council to think about that, because it seems like we're creating a new problem, rather than solving the fundamental problem of individuals that want to bike during the middle of the winter, after it snowed, and then they called the city complaining, saying, oh, my gosh, there's snow on the, the ground. And, and so let's, let's solve the fundamental problem, that there's a reasonable expectation that there will be snow on, along the main thoroughfares. And so I want to bring that up for the whole council to discuss, but I, I think we need to really reconsider the direction we're going.
Couple of comments for you, and then I think you can sit down, and then maybe we can talk amongst ourselves. I agree with half of what Councilman Teetz said. Trying to find a solution to address the sidewalks on the main, the main thoroughfares. You have some, some citizens that it's almost impossible for them to get to that sidewalk and clear that sidewalk. And then you have others, just because they happen to live closer to the entrance to the subdivision, might have easier access to that sidewalk than the person that might be in the middle. It doesn't make any sense to exempt that person, and then just because of the proximity that you live to the entrance to sub, that you should have to do it. So I, I agree that we should just exempt, exempt the sidewalk, then code enforcement doesn't have to deal with it, they don't have to single out certain people for doing their sidewalks, seems to be an easy solution. And then we address whether we want to, as a city, want to do some of those sidewalks where kids are walking to school or whatever. That, that seems to be a good solution to me. One of the reasons that this whole thing started is because a couple of citizens, Mr. Weir, and I believe Mr. Cushing, came forward to us and asked us to, to tie up the ordinance so it wasn't so gray. And requiring citizens to technically go out there and clear their sidewalk with this, just a dusting of snow and half an inch of snow, one inch of snow, I thought that was, I thought we needed to address that. To me, three inches of snow, hey, when I went to school, I had to go uphill on the way to school, and uphill on the way home from school, and...
Sounds rough. Sounds really bad.
Three inches does not seem that bad. I mean, it seems reasonable, a reasonable compromise from a dusting, three inches just seems right. So I, I agree with Councilman Teetz that I, I think it's time to exempt and not worry so much about those, those sidewalks that abut major thoroughfares, because there's just too many variables there. And I personally think three inches is reasonable. Most people that live in subdivisions take care of their sidewalks. And we don't have to tell them when to do it, they know when to do it. You know, enough of government telling you when you got to clear your sidewalk and what you got to do. We're trying to make it easier. Forty-eight hours, three inches, but I bet you most of our citizens will, will have a higher, higher standard than that, personally. So I'm willing tonight to, to add some language in there regarding exempting sidewalks, or do we want to have the city attorney have some time on that and bring that back to us?
Mayor, I think that, I, I think I'm speaking on behalf of all of city administration when I, since this is a fairly major change, I think we would like to bring back some specific language about exempting all of the major thoroughfare sidewalks, because I don't know that...
If we approve this as written this evening, and then I ask you to come back with an exemption for the sidewalks that abut major thoroughfares, with a stipulation that no enforcement on any of those sidewalks, and so we get that, that language back to us, would, would council feel comfortable with that? I think we need to get something in place before the, the snowfalls. More than today, personally. So I, I still think we should pass the ordinance as it is today, and then look to, to get some language in here about exempting sidewalks, and have some more discussion on that. Councilman Teetz?
Is this, is it a two-month process, do you think, meeting or two, or something like that?
I, I would anticipate that since, since you guys have been working with us for quite some time, it won't take us long just to tweak it, but I, I would really like the opportunity to just really revisit all. This is a change in the direction that, that we were previously given, so we, we would like to, to do that.
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I'm concerned about the forty-eight hour timeframe. The dusting and twelve hours probably, I guess I'm agreeing with both of you. But I, I think the forty-eight hours, if people don't get out to clear, then they end out with ice issues, and then, I, I don't know, I don't know what the right answer is, but I'm, I'm sharing the concern about the people, even just trying to get to your mailbox, if you're, if you are in a position where you're, you know, crossing the street and whatnot. I, I feel like we could be creating a problem if we're not careful. So maybe it's the three inches and twenty-four hours, which provokes all of us as residents to, to step up and be, just as you're suggesting, Mayor Slater, that, you know, people step up to take care of their neighborhoods and their, and their neighbors, but let's make sure our ordinance provokes that in a logical way. And I'm, I just feel like forty-eight hours is, it's a long time to let three inches of snow sit unattended. Am I crazy?
I wouldn't use that word, no. Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I absolutely agree with Councilwoman Hoderick here, that we have a standard in Troy. We started this talking about the sidewalks on major thoroughfares. We've gone a long ways tonight, recommendation is just exempting those, think that's a step certainly in the right direction. I think most Troy homeowners, and I believe in my subdivision, and most subdivisions I see, are going to get out there after the snow and take care of their own sidewalks and take care, but I think you're right, we don't need to give them too much wiggle room and too much breathing room, and maybe with forty-eight hours and three inches, that's a bit much. You guys have done an excellent job with a very limited direction. I think what you brought back to us was basically what we told you, and what you heard us say, and you, feeding it back to us. But I think we've all been thinking about this, listening to these residents, and so now we're making more drastic changes, which hopefully, Mr. Evans, is going to make your job easier in the long run, that's the whole intent. He had four hundred and eleven reported violations last year, no fines, no nothing. So basically, we're getting all these violations, it's just people reporting people and not a lot being done, so why put the residents through it? Hopefully, we're still going to have residents that have sidewalks that are on major thoroughfares that see the need to clean them, if it's not an undue burden on them, and they will do that. You know, we're not saying that you can't clean the ones, but there are some situations where it's just not reasonable to do, you get, you get a pass on it, okay? But others that, within reason, I think we live in Troy, I'm for neighbor helping neighbor, and Mr. Evans, I'm for, when that person comes to report a sidewalk that, that needs shoveling on a major thoroughfare, you give them a shovel. Okay? And I'm just, I'm joking, of course, but when, when they, you would love to do that sometimes, I know you like to give them a shovel, but basically, it's neighbor helping neighbor. If you've got a situation where you've got a senior citizen, we've had some come to this microphone and speak about it, that physically are not able to get out there and do it, or physically can't do it. In Troy, I think we live in a community that a lot of people would love to live in, we're one of the safest cities in the country, it's neighbor helping neighbor. It's neighbor helping neighbor. So, what I'm saying is, if you're, if you're listening, you're seeing this, you've got a neighbor that's in trouble, can't do their sidewalk, please get out and help them. I don't think we need 48 hours to do it, especially on the main sidewalks inside of subdivision. I think we need to tighten that up a bit. And then we're certainly looking, as Mayor Slater said, at sidewalks around schools, maybe the city getting a little more involved in that as well, to make, it's about safety. But on major streets, I'm agreeing with what the mayor's saying, and also agreeing with what Councilman Teetz and Councilwoman Hoderick saying too, about maybe in the side of the subdivisions, 48 hours and three inches may be a bit much. But in reality, we can say what we want. People are going to do better than that, I think, in most of the subs. Okay?
Councilman Teetz?
Just last thing, when you're compiling the list of thoroughfares, please be as liberal as possible with that list, meaning, you know, Northfield Parkway, there are many spots where I think we all acknowledge it's a thoroughfare even if it isn't a mile road. So, I just encourage it that way, because I, it, let's, let's, let's just get it done with.
Well, you know, I, we chose 48 hours because we looked at what other cities were doing. And most other cities, 48 hours was, seemed to be a time limit that, I mean, if it's the consensus of this council to do 24 hours, I'm okay, I can live with that, but 48 hours, I think our residents are just going to step up and do it anyways. And for the city to tell them, it's almost unenforceable anyways. Quite frankly, you know, Mr. Evans is not going to get out, run out there and say, "Okay, the last snowflake came down at nine o'clock. You have until 24 hours or 48 hours." Almost everything is complaint-driven. It's going to take two or three days for a complaint to come in to begin with, by the time Mr. Evans gets out there to try and enforce it, you got another day or so. But if the council feels more comfortable with 24 than 48, I just, I just think, let's give our citizens an opportunity to get out there and do it. That's why I'm in favor of 48 hours, and I'm in favor of 33 inches. I think it's a reasonable amount that might be more enforceable than 24 or two inches, or one inch. So, further discussion? Did anybody want to amend the ordinance? Let's see if we can get it, get a motion, get it on the table. We can do it as printed, and if somebody wants to make an amendment, that's fine. Mayor Protem Henderson?
I resolve I-4 as printed.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson and supported by Councilman Campbell, we approve I-4 as printed. Councilman Teetz?
With, with the, do we add an amendment now, but I just, I want to make sure this, this obviously happened later on, that we're going to exempt the major...
Oh, the exempt will come back to us. Could we ask for that in two weeks? I mean, two, two meetings?
Yeah. Mayor, I just want to make sure that we're clear on the 28 to 48 hours, because I'm hearing conflicting things, so...
We are, I, nobody has amended the ordinance under I-4 as printed at this point.
Okay.
We're talking about bringing back the exemption for the main roads.
And, and if it is council's intent to eliminate the required, to exempt all major thoroughfares, you could accomplish that by eliminating C out of 341101. And then that would require the conditions to be met.
Okay.
That would exempt every...
Can you bring that up, print?
It's on page 167 of your packet. So, it would read, "A lot or premises shall be exempt from the requirements of Section 3411 if all of the following requirements are met. A, the lot or premises is used as a single family or two-family residence, and B, the lot or premises is addressed on a non-major thoroughfare but has a rear or side yard abutting a major thoroughfare."
Period.
So, stating the obvious, Ms. Mayor Slater, the third point would be eliminated.
Eliminated.
So, would you like to move that amendment? Or do you want to...
One point on that, and it's something that I've been bringing up a couple of times through emails, that, to me, still does not seem clear that an exemption on a rear lot doesn't exempt them from their front lot. Or am I still missing that?
I didn't see that, quite frankly.
Can we read through that real quick, then?
Sure.
Okay. Sidewalks exempt from requirement to clear. A lot or premise shall be exempt from the requirements of Section 3411 if all of the following conditions are met. A, the lot or premise is used as a single family or two-family residence, and B, the lot or premise is addressed on a non-major thoroughfare but has a rear or side yard abutting a major thoroughfare, and C, the sidewalk is located less than 36 inches from the edge of the pavement of the major thoroughfare. So, is there something that should be added there to say that they still have to clean the front yard? Or no?
Well, the exemption is only for B, that abut major thoroughfares. Correct?
Mayor.
City Attorney Bloom?
Perhaps you could add language into 341101, that the, the rear and side yard of a lot or premises shall be exempt from the requirements of Section 3411 if all of the following conditions are met. So that it's clear that it does not apply to your front yard, so...
Did you want to make that amendment, Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yeah. Can...
341101, add the language for rear or side yards, come a lot or premise, and then it would just continue on as it is currently.
Okay. Is that, do I need to repeat that?
No.
Got it.
Support.
Okay. Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we amend the language to include what City Attorney Bloom has stated. Is there any discussion on that? We have a vote. Ms. Penner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro, sorry, Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Now, we need somebody to move the amendment.
The resolution as amended.
As amended.
I think, I think we should amend the other part, because the part regarding the depth and time, at least I'm going to bring up an amendment, it can get shot down. I've, I have no ego on this one. So, you know, why don't we do one inch or greater within 24 hours? The reason why is, if it snows two inches, they never, they're, they would not ever have to clean off their, their sidewalk, correct? There's nothing in the ordinance that says they would need to clean off their sidewalk.
Right.
So, I'm, I certainly don't enjoy City Hall knocking on the door, but in the same way, you know, we have to have some community standards of what we're willing to accept, and I don't think that would be acceptable to, to folks that have kids or have, want to go get to their mail. So, I'm going to amend what would be 3411 to read, it would read, "Shall clear sidewalks fall accumulation of snow when the depth of snow is one inch or greater. Ice or snow shall be cleared within 24 hours following the end of the ice or snow event, which led to such accumulation." I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Teetz and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we amend the ordinance as indicated by Councilman Teetz. Discussion? I'm not going to, I'm not going to support that, because I think that just is unenforceable for one thing, and I have more faith in our residents than to force them to get out when it snows one inch. And I, I think it's unenforceable anyways. Who's going to go out there and measure whether it's a half an inch, or three-quarters of an inch, or an inch and a quarter? We're trying to make this easier on our residents. That's what the whole intent was from day one on this, and I don't think that's doing that. So, I would vote no on it. Councilman Fleming?
I think all we're trying to do is, is make it, it's safe. Nobody's going to go out there and measure and send code enforcement around to do this, but I think it's just a standard in Troy. Sidewalk, I know every time it snows, my whole neighborhood gets out and takes care of the sidewalk. I mean, nobody's going to go out there and measure, but if you don't take care of it, it turns to ice, you know? It's a safety issue, it's not a big deal, whether it's one inches or three inches, I think it's just a standard. And 24 hours, most people can do that, but if they don't, again, I don't think we're going to go around and start going to Mr. Evans and complaining about it. So, give him a shovel. I'll support it.
Is there, I just have a question. Councilman Teetz, is your intent to, to change the language so that there has to be one inch of ice before the ordinance?
No.
You said snow or ice.
I'm simply changing the number from three inches to one inch, so...
That dealt with snow. I believe there was always, we were keeping in the ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, we were keeping in the...
Clear of ice.
Clear of ice.
It would read, it would just be replacing the number three with the, with the number one.
And replacing 48 with 24.
Correct.
Further discussion on that amendment?
That is back to what we had before?
It's close. It's a few hours more, and...
It's twice.
It's close, it's close.
It's double.
I think we're just micromanaging.
I do, too. I think it's micromanaging.
Micromanaging residences.
The vote, Ms. Penner? On the amendment?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Motion passes. Okay, can we get a, a motion on the amendment?
This would be a vote on the entire, everything as amended.
Yes.
Entire ordinance as amended.
Right.
Councilman Teetz?
Would you like to move the ordinance as amended?
I support.
Moved by Councilman Teetz and supported by Mayor Protem Henderson, we approve the ordinance as amended. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Penner?
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Well, I hope everyone understands I-4 now, the ordinance has been changed to one inch within 24 hours, and all sidewalks that abut or are adjacent to a main thoroughfare are now exempt.
Thank you to all the council members present. Very nice. Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome. Okay. Our next order of business is I-5. This might be a tough one to pass tonight.
Yeah.
This is the approval of the annual salary increase for the city manager.
I didn't see that right away.
City Manager Kishnik, did you intend to make an introduction on this item this evening?
I have no introduction. Councilmember Campbell has warmed up with a no vote on the last issue, and I would just introduce that it's been a great first year, and I look forward to an even better second year.
Well, we had a lively discussion under closed session, and here we are this evening. Councilman Fleming?
Yes, Mayor. I'll move Resolution I-5 as printed, approval of this annual salary increase for the city manager.
I'll second it. I know.
Who did?
Yeah, I did.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve the annual salary increase for the city manager as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Penner?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Did I pass?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Oh, man.
Okay, it's getting late. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. I am going to request to pull J-5 and take no action this evening, as requested by the city administration. Any other council member wish to pull a consent agenda item? Can I get somebody to move the resolution without J-5, please? Councilman Fleming?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item J-5, which shall be considered after consented agenda items of it.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve all items on the consent agenda, with the exception of J-5. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Penner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will not take any action on J-5 this evening. It will come back at our next council meeting with some language changes. Next item of business is memorandums and future council agenda items. K-1A is an announcement for November the 25th, 2013, a public announcement for a public hearing for industrial development district, IDD, and industrial facilities exemption certificate for Magna U.S. Holding, Inc., at 750 Tower. There are no memorandums submitted by city council, so our next item of business is for public comment for items not on the agenda. And our first speaker is Resident Cynthia Wiltshire. Good evening.
Hello again. I'm back this time, just about, talking about the master plan, and a lot of citizens are disappointed because it's not being upheld. There are a lot of rezonings that are causing a great deal of anxiety among people in the city that I've been talking to. The master plan was redone not that long ago, and I'd just like to know, why are we continuing to compromise our master plan, and we're setting some dangerous precedents by doing these rezonings? Do we need to go back and redo the master plan again? Or are we going to continue to grant rezonings just to fill these empty buildings with whatever or whoever wants to put something in them? Troy recently received a wonderful national award, has one of the top 10 best cities for families, but there's a lot of things that they might reconsider if they saw some of the rezonings that have gone in to fill buildings right next to neighborhoods that aren't friendly to families. One of them was tonight, and there's been others. I've been watching the planning boards for a long time, and their explanation for everything to make it fit seems to be... to make it fit seems to be landscaping. These men are hung up on landscaping. Landscape it here, landscape it there, and it'll make it all better, like a spoonful of sugar makes it go down easier. Not, not so. I think that there's other solutions than landscaping, and if you insert anything, they talk about landscaping, but you can insert any property name in there, and it comes out landscaping is, is the, the biggie for them. I noticed that this board is not diverse. We have a very diverse city, and for to have the, the men we have on that board, I think, and they've, a lot of them have been there a long time, as with a lot of committees. I know people that have put in application after application every two years, and it seems like we're getting the same people, and I'm one of them. I've been on the charter revision board for 30 years. Hello, there are other people that might want this job. Maybe we should think about term limits for them, like there are for the council. Get some new fresh ideas and get more people involved in our city instead of recycling, you know, there's other committees. I'd like to go on too, but I think there comes a time when we've got to open this up to other people too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is resident Joseph Fico. Resident Sarmad Youssef, Troy resident.
Good evening. My name is Sarmad Youssef, and I'm representing Miss Hookah Lounge. Six months ago, an ordinance was passed to close down all Hookah lounges at midnight. At that time, the council decided that they would revisit the issue within six months. Just coming up here to say that the past six months have been a huge struggle for us. We've been following all the rules that have been asked for us, just here to ask to review the matter. These past six months, they've been tough. Business has been decreasing day by day. A lot of the surrounding cities have had new Hookah lounges opening up, and I'm all the time, and they've been open until 2:00 a.m. and later. They've taken a lot of business from us, and every day is getting worse and worse. We're just asking that hopefully we can review this, maybe come to something we can all agree to for us, for business to pick up, and, you know, hopefully work everything out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It doesn't say if you're a resident or not, or are you a resident?
I'm not a resident.
Okay, good evening.
Hi, I just wanted to follow up on what Sarmad Youssef stated. As he was saying, we have not violated any rules since the ordinance was passed. We've been complying as best we can with the city, and we're here just trying to cooperate and trying to run our businesses as we, in an effective and safe manner. And we also just want to be treated similarly to other businesses that are in the community that cater to the same type of clientele, restaurants, bars, pubs, grills, they're all allowed to be open until 2:00 a.m., despite the fact that they sell alcoholic beverages and individuals imbibe these alcoholic beverages. Our Hookah Lounge is not obviously selling any of these beverages yet, where required to close at midnight. We simply ask to be treated similarly with those organizations. If the issue cannot be discussed today, I would ask for it to be put on the agenda for the next meeting so that it could be thoroughly discussed and analyzed and resolved. We're not trying to have a, like, set standard and not budge on our position. We're here to work with the city and to do our part. Thank you, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is resident James Savage.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, city council. I was beginning to wonder if it would still be Veterans Day by the time I got to speak, which is my topic. Incidentally, the, the insignia is for the Royal Air Force. I did not fly Spitfires. I am not a hero, and it was after World War II when I served. I just did my job. November the 11th, Veterans Day. In Canada, it's Remembrance Day. In Britain, it was always Armistice Day, the end of World War I. As a kid, I remember polishing my dad's medals for the Armistice Day parade. It was the day of remembering fallen comrades. My father was a soldier in the British Expeditionary Force, the first unit to enter war in France. Kaiser Wehrmacht referred to that unit as Britain's contemptible little army. My dad was not a hero. He was not, he saw no glory in battle, but he was proud to serve his country. He also had respect for the German troops who were doing the same thing. My personal hero of all time was a B-24 bomber pilot in the United States Army Air Force. In April 1945, the B-24 bomber returning from a raid over Germany developed engine trouble as he approached my hometown, Leamington, England. The pilot, 23-year-old Lieutenant Anderson from Mason, Michigan, ordered his crew to bail out. He turned the plane around and crash-landed in the first field outside of town. If he had not bailed out with his, if he had bailed out with his crew, the plane would surely have landed and crashed in the center of town. When we watched the plane burn, we thought everyone was out. We had seen the parachutes coming down. It was many years later that I found out the details when they named a street in his name, Anderson Drive, on the site of the fatal crash. He was the only casualty. Nobody on the ground was hurt. In a V E, V E Day celebration in 1945, the British Commonwealth Club in Warren invited the commander of the Anderson VFW Post 7309 in Mason to pay tribute to that young pilot. I just, I would really like to finish this, if I may.
I'd like to weigh the requirements in law, Mr. Savage, to continue.
Move forward, please.
So, the British Commonwealth Club paid tribute to that young pilot, and a visit to that VFW post is still on my bucket list. As I see many events of my lifetime becoming history, I realize that the number of people who remember World War II is getting older and fewer. So, on this November the 11th, it is an opportunity to honor my father for his service and to pay tribute to Lieutenant Anderson from Mason, Michigan, for his ultimate sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Jim Ward-Potinsky, Troy resident.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
City staff, city residents. I'll be brief. I'm only here to pay my respects to the winners of the election last week, so I want to congratulate you, Councilman Fleming, and you, Councilman Pennington, for retaining your seats, and you, Councilman Hodorick. I want to both congratulate you and welcome you to the council table. There's some 8,000-plus of the city residents expecting big things from you. I suspect you won't disappoint us. The only other thing I have to say is, I was gratified to see most of you out front this morning for the Veterans Day ceremony. That, to me, is one of the most important holidays we have, and so it's very important that you attend. And I might add, Councilman Hodorick, you seem to be a quick learner, and you were there as you should have been. So, thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. Is Lorraine here? Oh, sorry. Our next speaker is Lorraine Campbell. I'm sorry, I saw you earlier, I didn't see you now. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll be brief also. On behalf of the Troy Historical Society, I'd like to congratulate our new councilwoman, Ellen Hodorick, and councilmen Ed Pennington and Wade Fleming on their election to city council. This evening, you and your colleagues continue work initiated by these gentlemen that you see on the screen. This is your history lesson for the night. This is the first Troy city commission elected on December the 12th, 1955, and they are, from left to right, Mayor Tom Costello, and commissioners Roy Duncan, George Ford, Ernest Gray, George Yokum, Elmer Lowe, Donald Lance, Associate Judge Deville Mason, and Judge Charles Losi. This same group was active in crafting the plan to incorporate Troy township as a homerool city, and four of these men served on the charter commission, which authored the city charter you have sworn to uphold. Each one demonstrated incredible integrity. In fact, they would never discuss their plans to become a city while they sat in the township hall, because that was not township business. Instead, they would gavel their meetings closed and reassemble at the home of Norman Barnard, where they plotted the new city, wrote their petitions, and hatched their plan to distribute them. And yes, both that 1927 Township Hall and the Niles Barnard House are now at the Troy Historic Village. It was also reported that Mayor Tom Costello, a successful businessman and a member of the school board, would not keep any of the money he earned as a public official. He turned every dime back to the Troy schools and to the local churches. Most important, the first city commission shared a common vision for an outstanding community and turned their vision into reality through study, discussion, and decisions built on consensus and guided by integrity. We thank you all for continuing the process of civic leadership that they began 58 years ago. Thank you very much.
That concludes the residents that have signed up to speak this evening for items not on the agenda. There are no council referrals, so our next item of business is council comments. Councilman Pennington?
I just want to make a quick comment on Veterans Day. We went to the ceremony this morning, and that was a very touching ceremony. My dad served in the military, my grandpa served in the military, and I just want to give a salute to all the veterans out in Troy, the ones that are still here and the ones that couldn't make it, that are watching on TV. Thank you for your service, and if you see a veteran, thank him, and if you see a, someone that is serving the military, thank him.
And your son's currently in the military?
Yes, my son graduates boot camp in four days, so we're going there next weekend.
Well said. Mayor Protem Henderson?
I just want to comment about my mustache. This is Movember, for anybody that doesn't know. The Live Strong organization is a, a group of men and women across the country that get together in November, grow facial hair for a cause. Some of you know that two years ago, right after I became elected to council, that I had a bout with prostate cancer myself, and fortunately, early detection is, is a wonderful thing, and I, you know, I'm thankfully here, healthy, with no, no chemo, no radiation because of early detection, and I'd be remiss if I didn't step to the plate and address it at least once a year. Anybody over 40, go to their doctor, get your PSA checked, it's painless, and it can be a lifesaver.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes, mayor. Last week was a very difficult week for many of us in this city. We lost some really true leaders and wonderful people in this city. We lost unexpectedly Stu Redpath. Our hearts and prayers go out to his family. God suddenly have a heart attack. Actually, the next day, we had Troy Nature Society fundraiser, Leon Lulu's, that he was so instrumental in, in, in working on. And so our, just our thoughts and prayers go out to that, that family. What a true leader and a great gentleman he, he was. Tragically, the, the next day, we lost Joel and Dale Garrett. Some of you may know them, owners of Ladgility and, and other businesses. They built hundreds and hundreds of homes in this city. They basically built Emerald Lakes, along with a number of other things, number of businesses here. Solidly, they did a lot of things in the community, they didn't do it for fanfare. I know, I think they've, they've helped the Troy Historical Society in the past, Lorraine, and so they're going to be greatly missed, and it's just, I just wanted to mention that the election was last week, but you know, I really couldn't think a lot about that. I was, I was focused on these families. I know a lot of people were, and they're going to be really, really missed, and there, there are others as well, but those are just on my, my heart today, and I wanted to share with you, just to keep these families. We lost Stu Redpath, and we lost Joel and Dale, and a tragic plane accident, father and son. It's great people in this community, they'd be really missed.
It was a tough, tough week for Troy. Two days after the news on Joel and Dale, Donna Lukish of Lukish's Restaurant on Rochester lost her husband, Mike, and was buried shortly after that. Mike was a great guy, and as we all know, the Lukish's do a lot for the community. They, they're always stepping forward to provide food, I know, especially to the police department, fire departments here in Troy, and the city employees. So, it was a tough week. Any other comments from council? Councilman Hodorick, this is the first council meeting that's gone to 11 o'clock since...
Uh-oh.
Since I can remember, so I'm hoping this isn't a trend. But welcome, for sure.
Actually, thank you. I, I would like to say I'm proud to join this team, and you all have really brought things forward in a very constructive way after the downturn and everything that this community dealt with, and I'm proud to join you. I'm humbled, I'm humbled by the votes I had, Mr. Ward-Potinsky, and I take the job seriously, and I really look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments on the reports that were in the packet this evening? We are going to recess to the boardroom for a study session on retirement and retiree health care plans, so if you want to join us in the boardroom, we'll be there in about seven minutes.
It was a tough one, it was a tough one. It was. I want you to know that.
Good work, and I'm glad everything works out.
You know, backing up to the residential...
This one here, I'm not too sure about.
Well, you know what, I think, I honestly believe...
No, it's done, it's already done. It's already approved.
Or if you have guests, just think, all you gotta do is just...
It's done, meaning you, you don't have to, for rear and side yards, you do not have to, it's exempt, those are... it's exact, those are
There's nothing bad about trees, whatever you do.
Oh, I hear you're all excited about the trees.
He did, he came off, yeah, he matched, and it almost exactly matched the colors, too, almost exactly. I told him he had good taste, you know, so, yeah.
He was trying to. I thought I did.
He was alluding to it.
I thought I was alluding to it.
I'm sorry, I didn't even talk to him.
We still got an hour left. At least.
Well, I can't make
Thanks for bringing it forward for us, you know.
We don't have all that there, I know.
It wasn't supposed to snow today, when we were talking about it. That's right. Bye, Cheryl. Have a wonderful night.
Hey, Ellen, you want me to wrap them up for you? Want me to wrap them up, because it's cold out there?
Yeah, if you feel For what a meeting, huh? Are you sure, because then I can run you to the after?
Yeah, go ahead, go, no, no, no.
I talked with City Manager Kishnik this afternoon, he said he would probably start this around 11 o'clock tonight.
Pretty close.
That's pretty amazing. So he made Tom cut the slides from 300 to
250.
So, I think I'll just turn this over to City Manager Kishnik, and
I still think this is a good idea when we came up with this, and what was happening was the Detroit, City of Detroit bankruptcy was being talked about and bandied about as to why, and the legacy costs that were ongoing, and shame on the city for all the promises that were unkept and unfunded, was the talk of the radio, and so when I heard that, I thought, what a, what a perfect way to kick off the fall, in terms of looking at different areas and costs, and looking at where we are in terms of our retirement systems, and then you start to look at, is Troy a success story of Troy, and you look at the changes that the previous council administrations have made, that have made sure that this is a solvent city. So, I thought that was a great idea for tonight, and I still do. My new way of thinking is to give you the full reports, and ask the presenters to go over only part of it, in summary, more summary form, since it's 11 o'clock, but they will hit the salient points, which, number one, the city has moved from a DV to a DC plan, so you've mitigated your costs, you are very well funded in most of your plans, and number three, you're taking steps to fund that every year, at least 100%.
And, as we talked about this afternoon, these entire presentations will be on the city website for the citizens to get full
Right.
Full copies of these will be available on the website, even though we're not going to be covering them all this evening.
So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Darling, and he's brought a few guests who are the experts in actuaries, and at 11 o'clock at night, I'm not sure we should learn the science of actuarial science.
Well, my next meeting's at 2:00.
So, thank you, Mr. Kishnik. So in conclusion, just real quick, these are the retirement systems that we have for the city, covering all of them, including the defined benefit and our defined contribution. So we'll talk real briefly about each one of them. Again, we have the employee retirement system, which is our defined benefit plan. We have the retired health care trust, which is a defined benefit plan that provides retired health care benefits. We have the volunteer fire incentive plan, or the VFIT plan, which acts as a defined benefit plan. We have our defined contribution plans, then with the 401A, and our retirement savings contribution plan. So I'll talk real briefly about the plans, then we'll bring up our special guests to talk a little bit how actuary studies go, and some of the assumptions that are used in those, and then finally, we'll round it out, how do we compare to other systems? Honestly, this presentation is really a success story, a success, a success story of how, really, the foresight of the city, of our predecessors, and knowing the financial implications of providing some of those benefits, and what they've done to, and what we have done going forward. So just real quick, the ERS system, it's a single employer system, which means we're not part of another pool, it's our system. There's many communities out there that are under that type of system, of price benefits, obviously pension benefits. Our employees are required to contribute, depending on what union group, between 1.5% to 4.5% of their pay. We are required to contribute to these plans based on what our actuaries tell us that we have to contribute in accordance with 314, how we get 314 says, "Doubt shall contribute." Again, normal retirement age is 65, but as we know, there are certainly provisions for early and late retirements, such as, I think, in the police officers, it's 25 years of service regardless of age, I think there's 55 with 27 years of service for some of our general employees. So there are provisions out there, but the normal is 65 with 10 years of service, and more importantly, the system phased out closing to new membership starting back in 1997. Real quick, as you can see, then we have 322 beneficiaries and really 64 actives. So if this is a triangle, our triangle would be upside down, wouldn't it, right? We have, we have very few actives, as opposed to retirees, which you would expect under a closed plan. Now, if we were still open, that wouldn't be quite like that, about 302 to 300, be more balanced. So again, we're going to look at, then, that's how our system looks with actives and retirees, but let's also compare to how many are in this plan, the 64, as to how many are in our defined contribution plan. So as you can see, really about, what, about 20% is all we have left of our entire active population that are in the DB plan. So, again, about 80% are in the defined contribution plan. Because again, we started phasing this out in 1997. Now, here's a bunch of nerves to throw at you, because it is at 11 o'clock, but these are important, you'll see these in every one of your comprehensive annual financial reports, our financial statements, the numbers are provided by our actuaries, but what's important to notice, we have this done every year, is that for our 2012 valuation, again, you'll notice it's on a calendar year as opposed to a fiscal year, that we had 147 million in assets, our accrued liabilities was 153 million. What this does mean, it means that all of our actives and retirees, they had earned up to this date, $153 million worth of benefits, okay? It does include future, right, future services by our active members. So, with that being said, then, our unfunded liability at 1231 is about 5.4 million. That means, of all the services from these employees that have already been performed, right, we're still underfunded by about 5.4 million, which means, though, on the other side, you're 96.4% funded, which is a good thing, and we'll show you that in a bit, as we compare it to other communities. The big thing, really, is, is the ARC, which is the Actuarially Required Contribution, and the big issue is, is are you making the ARC requirements? They're going to give you the number, if you make those, you will be, the system will be fine at the end of the day. Again, as you can see, we've always made 100% of our required contributions, which again, in 13 was about 1.8 million dollars. So, we always have the saying, you know, here out there, what are, you know, legacy costs, and before we define, we need to really define what that is. So to me, a legacy means the person's gone, right, or the service, in this case, the service has already been performed by our actors, right, the retirees, you know, and the actives have already performed the service, right? So that's what's unfunded, is to me, the legacy part. So what I've done is, is okay, here's what our contributions are going to be, basically what they were in 13, and what we expected them to be in 14 and 15, based on our ARCs. So, again, I did some math, and I tried to segregate that $5 million, right, that we seen on the page before, that was unfunded, how much of that contribution is going to be funding that $5 million, and how much is really the normal cost, right, for an active person, this year's worth of service equals this amount of money? So, because there's been questions out there, hey, what would, what would our required contribution be if we were 100% funded? Well, again, you're going to fund going forward for that service for that next year's employee's worth of service, right? So again, if you put that $5 million out there, that would get rid of the legacy cost stuff, but still going forward, you'd still have costs around $800,000 to $900,000 a year, as you're paying for those employees, as they earn those benefits, okay? Again, so I tried to define legacy costs as past service, the normal cost for a city employee, which is really this, and we kind of use, you know, because we have disclosure of what people make, you know, on our website, and so we really use this basis, right? Clearly, if I put individual A, his, his, he didn't earn 30% of retirement, he really all earned about 16.9%. Yes, question?
The 16.9%, they're contributing 1.5 to 4.5.
Right, that's correct. Well, right, but this is, again, our cost.
Our cost.
This is our cost.
But if we put in 16.9, they're putting in
Right, right, I'm talking about, right, our cost, so if they're putting in another one, correct. Okay? Now, keep in mind that this is a closed system, okay? So, our actuaries are not going to let me amortize this cost over the next 30 years. They're going to make me pay it out, really, within the next 10 to 12. The last person in the system, we closed it out in 1996, has about 15 years' worth of service, they're going to be retiring in the next 10 years. So every year, this goes down, as far as what they'll let me amortize the legacy cost for. Thank you very much. But that's why, that's why you see someone else's monstrosity. Okay, real quick, let's talk about retired health care. Again, this is a single employer system, price healthcare benefits, employees are not required to contribute if service is greater than 25 years. In other words, what they do for every year of service, they earn 4%. Year one, we'll pay 4% of your healthcare, year two, we'll pay 8%. So, in theory, after 25 years, 100% of your healthcare will be provided. If you're under 25 years of service, then the issue is, again, you accrue 4% a year, times your service year, or $400 a month will put towards your premiums, whatever is greater. Now, we have made some headway in this, in the last couple of labor negotiations, we've actually cut it down to, we'll pay up to a maximum of 90%, and you're only going to accrue 3% a year. And really, the issue is this, you know, in our minds, if we have retirees out there that have 100% of their healthcare paid, what is their incentive, right, to stay healthy, and, you know, the idea is to have some skin in the game, and as we look at different plans and different options for them, you know, that could actually save them. So we really wanted to try and get our retirees to have a little bit vested benefit in the cost of retired health care. So we're making progress in that area. Now, the city is not required to contribute to what our actuaries say, but it is certainly a best business practice, because clearly, if you don't, it's pay now or pay later, or you're going to pass these legacy comps on to the next generations. Again, the system is closed, begin phased out, starting in 2006, and here is our database. This is almost the exact opposite of what we just seen between the DB and DC system, right? This time, I've got about 80% that are still, have, are part of the retired health care trust, and about 20% that are in what we call their DC system or the retired health care savings plan. So again, it just, it just started in 2006, which really is about the earliest that you'll see out there, and the reason why was because people pay retired healthcare on a pay-as-you-go basis. Here's the bill this year, here's the bill next year. They weren't pre-funding it, and one of the big reasons they weren't, is there really wasn't a mechanism to be able to pre-fund it. In other words, until PA 149 came out in about mid-2000, when we actually started this, you couldn't create a trust to start saving for retired healthcare, because it really doesn't make sense, right, for me to take money out of the general fund, which I can only I can only invest in bonds, right, and very secure things, to put it into something else that can only invest in bonds, right? You wanna create a trust where now I can start to get the leverage of the market and get better returns and really make that money work to help pay for these benefits. So that's why you didn't see this until later years, because it really wasn't a mechanism to, to incentivize people to, to pre-fund these benefits. Okay? So next, again, the idea then, okay, we, for the retired health trust, you only have to have a valuation every two years. So we just basically got this, and these aren't final, these are preliminary numbers, so they may change to, to some extent. But again, for service that's already been formed, about not, almost a hundred million dollars' worth of services were, we have promised, of that, you know, we funded about fifty-nine million, leaving about forty million of unfunded service for services that's already began. Now, keep in mind, right, we only started pre-funding this, phasing it in since two thousand and six, right? So we would expect, you know, all that previous service that we're trying to catch up for. Now, we got a longer time to, to fund this liability. I think they're gonna let me do twenty-five years on this one. So, but that's the idea. But again, we're fifty-nine percent funded, and when I show you how we compare to other municipalities, again, it's gonna be some, a success story. We're well ahead of the game. Again, the issue is, make your required contributions. They're gonna give you them out. If you make that, at the end of the day, you will be fine. And we're actually ahead of the game. We're actually trying to contribute, because we know we got legacy costs out there. We're contributing a little bit more than, than even what they're saying, because we know we're trying to make up ground and get rid of some of these legacy costs as we go forward. Okay? Now, again, so here's, if I broke this down between normal cost, the normal cost really is about five point two percent of eligible wages, even putting it into the trust, and of course, then here's the legacy cost, which is significantly, you know, different, right? I don't know, it's what it's, uh, if I had to break that apart...
About three times normal cost, it's about fifteen percent.
Yeah, exactly. So again, you know, it's about twenty-six seventy-five, twenty-six percent to seventy-five percent. Okay? Any questions on that as I go forward? Let's talk about the Volunteer Fire Incentive Plan. Okay? So, again, it's a single employer system, basically is providing an incentive to our volunteers based on their years of service. So it's gonna be years of service type contribution. Again, the, the current one is six hundred and five dollars per year of service. We put it in the budget, we release budget for fourteen at a, at a rate of six forty-two. No contributions are required by firefighters. Obviously, they're not employees, and they're getting contributions from, right? We are not required to contribute to what the actuaries say, but it certainly is a best practice. Normal vesting, they vest over time, fifty-five year, age fifty-five with ten years of service, fifty with twenty-five years of service, so you can see it's a progressive scale. And then down here, we've got eighty retirees and about a hundred and forty active volunteers. So that's kind of more of a normal type allocation you would see between actives and retirees. Again, here's the valuation. We have about five point nine million in assets, about thirteen million in liability, so it's about a seven million dollars of unfunded liability. Services has already been performed, that we haven't funded yet, and the reason is, a big reason is, is that it's not a trust, right? I can't, I cannot invest in, in, in equities and things I can do with the normal retirement system. All I can do are cover bonds, paper, I can't get a return out of it because it's not a trust. Okay? It's, it's really a fund of the city, right? The council at any time could say, you know what, we're not doing this anymore, we're done. A creditor could claim those assets, because it's not any trust. It is just really a fund of the city, you know, actuary allocation. So I can't invest, I'm, I'm limited by public act twenty. And again, the idea though is, hey, make your required contributions using the correct assumptions, and we'll talk about that in a minute, it will be okay. And as you can see, we've been pretty steady in, in the eight to nine hundred thousand per year required contributions for this plan. But with that being said, I'm only forty-five percent funded, okay? My funding's pretty, pretty low, to where, where really I'd like to be. With that being said, then, let's break out normal costs and legacy costs. Again, you can see, this is one of the challenges that we're gonna, that we have going forward, you know, when, when, when significant amount of your annual costs are really for the legacy's part of it, because you're only forty-six percent funded. So, we're significantly underfunded at forty-six percent in VFIT. We're unable to invest in that form, like I said, with, like we came with other trusts, because we're not a trust. So we need, in our actuaries say, we need to reconsider some assumptions that we have them use when they do this actuary report. And a couple of them are rate of return. We're saying, hey, use rate of return like we do with our other pensions at six and a half percent, but I can't get six and a half percent, can't invest, no such thing, especially in this market, at least going forward. In previous years, you know, ten years ago, it wasn't a bad assumption, right, for, for bonds I could get, about five, get some juice on, about five percent or so. But the issue is that we currently are reviewing the plan with an incentive committee and kinda looking at this, and I think we'll probably be bringing forward maybe some, some proposals as we go forward related to this. Okay? The defined contribution plan, okay, so now we're out of the DBs, now we're into the DC plans. Okay, there's no legacy cost, right, associated with the DC, it's, it's based on, on your union agreement. Employees are contributing between three and six percent of their wages, employers basically contributing eight to thirteen percent. So in other words, the employees putting in fifty cents, and we'll put in a dollar type, type issue, okay? Again, we've been phasing this one since ninety-seven, since the other one was phasing out. At June thirtieth, they had about two hundred and forty-five employees, they, of their eligible payroll, they had about fifteen point one million. The employees contributed about six hundred and ninety-two thousand. We contributed about one point six million, and, and of course, they vest, they're fifty percent after three years, seventy-five percent after four years, and a hundred percent vested in our share. They're always vested in the contributions they make, but in the contributions that the city makes, they're a hundred percent vested after five years. This is pretty normal out there from what I see. Okay? So we're phasing retired trust now with a retired health savings account, and this works very much similar to what you just seen in the DC program. Employees are retired to contribute two percent, the payroll match, uh, four percent, so again, fifty cents to a dollar. There's fifty-five employees in the system at June thirtieth, covered payroll, it's about two point six million. Of that, the employees can contribute about fifty-two thousand, and the city contributed about a hundred and six thousand. Again, it vests exactly the way that DC, or city contributions. So, summary of all, so if I put this all together, right, with all the legacy costs for June thirty, two thousand and thirteen, here are our contributions, right? Here's what we would consider normal cost for that year's worth of activity. Here's what I consider legacy costs in trying to make up some of that lost ground. So it's, you know, it's roughly a fifty-fifty split, close in there. The total normal cost, I would include VFIT in there, but if I looked at our total salaries for that year, around twenty-seven million, so it comes up to about fifteen point six percent for retiree benefits as, as a whole, okay? So again, on, on the legacy cost things, again, these are services that were already performed and we're, and we're just doing to catch up. But the issue is, is why do I have legacy costs? What makes a legacy cost? And, and our gentleman that I'm gonna introduce here are gonna help us with that, because the legacy cost only happens really when actual results differ from the assumptions that the actuary used to develop the ARC. That's what, in other words, we thought we're gonna get six and a half percent, and we only got four percent. We thought, really, my mortality tables, this guy lived too long, you know, things of that nature. That's what creates legacy type cost, especially when we're funding, well, they're telling us. But they'll be, have a little bit more on that. So again, I'd like to then introduce our, our good friends, Ken Alberts and Jeff Tevo, and they are actuaries from the actuary firm of Gabriel Roder Smith, and they are clearly leaders in their profession and, and leaders in, in their communities, as far as I know, be more than any other municipalities, right? Municipal finance company than any other firm in, not only this state, but the nation. Very good, so.
All right, thank you very much.
And my, do that, I'll give this to you, and I'll try and pull up your presentation.
Sure.
And... Sorry, were there any questions for me before? I'm, I'm coming back real quick, yes.
You're gonna come back and do a comparison and all that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna finish that up. So, we kinda talked about actuaries and legacy costs, and I wanted to talk about the assumptions that created those, and then at the end of the day, we'll talk, celebrate some success by comparing it to some other...
We, we had originally designed a twenty-minute presentation, an educational seminar, but I wanna make sense of to the time. Tom and I talked a little bit earlier today about maybe paring down, just focusing on a couple of slides, but I also wanna make sure that we get your questions answered. So I'm gonna basically start off, if you have any questions to start with, and then also, as we're talking, please do, do interrupt us with any questions. So let me just kinda open it up to you. Are there any burning issues that you'd like us to focus on, questions you wanna answer straight out? Even?
Probably gonna be talking over most of our heads anyway.
I'll try not to do that. All right, um, let's see if I can operate this thing. Oh, there, all right, so the most important slide here. What Tom was talking about was we, we basically produced a model, mathematical model, that tells the city how to fund these benefits. He described the benefits, they're, they're defined in terms of, and, and back up and say, we, we only deal with the three defined benefit plans. We don't deal with the three defined contribution plans, one of the advantages of defined contribution. You don't need an actuary for that.
You don't know. It is what it is.
It is what it is.
So with the defined benefit plan, the, the question is, well, what is your, your debt? It's based on things that haven't happened yet, so we have to make much of assumptions. We put together a model, and I'm gonna focus on this slide for a minute here. This describes the assumptions that are mostly assumptions that we have made, and kinda classify them into two categories, demographic assumptions and economic assumptions. You can think of demographic assumptions as those things that happen to people. Well, people decide to retire, people die before or after retirement, people become disabled, they get salary increases. This one, this one's a, kind of a tricky one. A lot of people would, would put salary increases over in economic, we actually split it off into two pieces. And so the pieces over here in demographic would be the salary increases for merit and longevity, because really, the people are earning those pieces of it. The other component, which is economic, would be the inflation, that's what's happening to money. People quit, they become disabled, and then we've got the economic assumptions, those things that are happening to money. Well, inflation happens to money, devalues money, and then the money can earn more money as you invest it. And that's a key, key, important factor in the defined benefit plan, is that the money that's in there, the whole reason why you pre-fund is so that that money will lessen the burden paying those benefits that otherwise would be on the employer, which is also the tax base, and the members. And you can, I'm gonna back up a little bit here, because you can see, I have a hard time, I wasn't supposed to talk about this, this slide, I have a hard time not talking about this slide, this is my favorite graph, I have this printed up on pillowcases at home, just to make it crazy. Well, this is really the whole story here, and this, you know, basically what we were just talking about is illustrated right here. When a retirement system first starts out, you have no cash obligations, you have no retirees. As it grows, those cash obligations, because those retirees wanna get their pensions, it grows rapidly until you get a balance, and it matures, and this is an open plan, a plan that's continuing to have new hires going into the plan. You will eventually get a balance between the actives and the retirees, and that cash payout will level out as a percentage of pay. If you don't pre-fund the plan, as Tom was talking about, a lot of old plan, a lot of post-retirement plans don't pre-fund, this is what happens to your contribution. It just goes up and up and up. Now, the red line is the benefit payments, the black line is actually your cost, because there are administrative causes on top of the benefit payments. If instead, you follow this light blue line, I know that's, that's a little bit hard to see here, but if you follow this light blue line, what you're doing is you're putting away money before you need it. And that money basically becomes an endowment fund. It's there not necessarily to spend and pay, it's there for the purpose of earning more money. When you get out here, your contribution stays relatively level, and I think in some of the charts that Tom showed, we saw that, that's staying fairly level, and it can be a major contributor to the benefits, paying as much as fifty percent of the cost of the benefits. And so that becomes critical. If the investments are not there, they have to be replaced by actual contributions. And so you, as you have gains and losses, as Tom was talking about with investment gains and losses, you assume that you were gonna earn six and a half percent last year, you earned two percent. Well, that means you gotta bring up contributions to cover that. You assume you're gonna earn six and a half percent last year, you earned ten percent. Well, then you can bring the contributions back down, because you have more in the fund sooner than you expected. I am going to, we have to put up these equations here, you know, at, at the heart, actuaries are all mathematicians, and mathematicians, there's a little secret here, where mathematicians don't use numbers, we use letters. If you think about the, the most famous equation, what's the most famous equation you guys can come up with?
E equals M C squared.
Right, which is E times, E equals M times C times C. There are no numbers in that equation. All right, C plus I equals B plus E. Contributions plus investment income have to equal benefits plus expenses. When you're putting the plan together, and we do our valuations, and we look at that and come up with the cost, we're dictated by that equation, making sure that basically our costs equal our obligations at all points in the future. I think with that, Jeff's gonna talk a little bit about some specifics for ERS.
Right. And make sure to give me the really boring part. So stick with me here. So this is a little chart that is specific to the ERS, because it uses a different funding method than, say, the, the volunteer incentive plan. And so when we do our cost method, as we call it, we always start with this top box here, which is the present value of future benefits. And so what that is, is it is a figure that in today's dollars, and with all the assumptions that we combine and put into our model, if you ran out all of the benefits for all of the active members that are gonna eventually retire or die or be disabled or whatever, plus all the terminated vested people, and once they retire, and all of the retirees that are getting, get benefit payments, you get those all the way out until they all die, and you take those cash flows and you discount it all the way back with our assumptions that we put together, that's the dollar amount that you get. And so that's, if you had, according to this plan, if you had a hundred and sixty point four million dollars right now in your plan, you'd be fully funded. You wouldn't have to worry about any future contributions at this point. But that isn't the case, and so we break it down a little bit even further. Here we have your assets, a hundred and forty-seven point six million, and then here, this plan doesn't have a traditional unfunded or what, you know, Tom was referring to as a legacy cost, just by virtue of what this cost method does. Because it's a closed plan, you see this very common with closed plans. And so these are the, the future contributions that the, the members and cities unhook for, and then break it down even further, you can see the members, their future contributions are gonna be one point three million dollars, and then the cities unhook for eleven point five. And then if you look over here at this little quote here, it says that the eleven point five million is being financed over the future working lifetime of the active members, so that eventually, once those members are all into retiree status, we wanna be basically fully funded at that point. So that's the goal, and so for the fiscal year ending six thirty fifteen, the payment is one point five million, which I think we already saw with, in Tom's figures. Here's a different cost method that we use, and this is very common for open plans that we service and, and for certain GASB reporting standards. we service and, and for certain GASB reporting standards, we have to show these numbers, and these, you know, actually came up in, earlier in Tom's presentation, and so when he showed you, you know, you're ninety six percent funded or whatever, this is where these numbers are coming from. And so you can see, we're starting with the same figure at the top, breaking it down further into the accrued liability, which Tom explained very well, is, is the amount of benefits that have been accrued up to this point in time for all the past services. And then here's the future normal cost or the future service that people are accruing in the future, the, the payments for that service. And so once again, here's your assets over here, and then here's the unfunded part or what Tom was referring to as the, as the longevity cost, or legacy cost, so, you know, traditionally this part is gonna be financed, you know, over, you know, twenty five, thirty years, something like that, you can kind of think about this as the mortgage part of your, part of your plan, a lot of times you refer to that analogy, and then over here, of course, you have the members paying their portion, and then the employer is paying their portion of the normal costs as well. And so down here, we're just explaining that under this cost method, because we're breaking it out into normal costs and then the accrued liability portion, there's actually two pieces, you have the normal cost, and then you have the unfunded part, which we're also referring to as the, the legacy costs, whereas in the, in the actual funding method, which, you know, when we say, this is how much you're gonna be contributing to the plan, this is the method that we're using, and so this is what's showing up.
Yeah, that's a question, is it typical in cities that the member portion would be, you know, that small amount compared to the employer's portion of, of cost?
Yeah.
I mean, it's probably what, eight times, eight, eight times as much?
It's probably a little bit closer for other plans, I bet, it really does vary, but I think a typical, in the public sector, for civilian plans, you're probably looking at a typical employee cost of somewhere between, we usually express it in percent of payroll.
A percentage.
Five percent to eight percent of payroll is what a civilian employee would typically pay.
Yes.
And the normal cost for a civilian employee is somewhere between ten, very, probably between eight and fifteen percent.
Okay, they pay five, it's known a cost of eight.
It's, it's, it's a factor of two to three.
But here it's a factor of?
Yes.
Of eight?
Yes, it is, go to the next slide.
Factor of eight, right.
Yeah, now this, this, this factor slows it down a little bit more, now one of the things.
Four and a half.
Yeah, this, this gets a little confusing, and I apologize for some of the confusion. The first slide here, if you go back one more, this is how we're creating the contribution that we tell you to put in. The second slide talks about how we're doing the reporting on your GASB reporting and your CAFR and all those things. They tie together, but what the difference is, is what we call the actuarial cost methods, which Jeff was talking about. The actuarial cost method is what the actuary is used to assign, to assign costs to any given year, okay? And in this method, we're basically saying, we're not gonna assign cost to the past service, we're just gonna say, whatever the assets are, that's your past service liability, so you never have an unfunded liability under this method. Whatever you don't have in assets, we're gonna call future normal costs, and we're gonna spread that over the working lifetime of the group. Now, you'll notice this twelve point eight million dollars, if you go to the next slide, equals the sum of what we call the unfunded liability and the future normal costs, so those two tie together. So in this method, what we're doing is we're saying, okay, we're gonna create an annual slice of cost for each member that's leveled as a percent of their payroll from the date that they enter the plan to the date that they exit the plan. If we add up all those past normal costs that have already accrued, we get what we call the accrued liability. This is the number a lot of people focus on when you're looking at other plans, and what Tom is gonna give you some of these other statistics, that's what he's gonna talk about, the accrued liability. The accrued liability is one of the most misunderstood numbers in the entire evaluation report. It is the theoretical value of where you want your assets to be, given everything you know today. Not what you knew yesterday, not what you're gonna know tomorrow, but what you know today, this is where you want your assets to be.
Yes.
So under this method, we then compare them with where your assets are, and we say, the unfunded accrued liability is basically the difference between where you want to be and where you're at.
Gotcha.
So if you're not where you wanna be, either you could be ahead or behind, you're gonna take this and amortize it over, or finance it over a few years, and add that to your normal cost or your annual contribution. So the annual contribution, the sum of all the future annual contributions are up there, the seven point four million dollars. So that gives you a better comparison, get back to your question, I know it was long ago to answer, but get back to your question, that, when you break this seven point four million dollars down, that gives you a better comparison between the employee and employer portion, and the relationship between them.
Okay, yeah, that's, but still about four times as much in four years.
Yes. Now, there are a lot of public plans that don't have member contributions.
At all.
At all. There, there's less of them now, when we went through this recession, following the recession, that was one of the major things that changed in a lot of plans, a lot of employee contributions went up across the country.
They're not eliminated, they're still around.
Oh, yeah.
It just increased the employer's portion.
And the employee's portion.
I mean, the employee's portion. Probably the employer's portion.
Any, any other fellow questions? Okay, there's a couple more quick slides, one of the major components of our valuation report is, of course, the assets, you know, and when you look at these slides, you know, the assets are, you know, take up a huge chunk hopefully of your liabilities, and so one of the things that we do in our reports is we smooth the assets, or sometimes we refer to as a funding value or an actuarial value, and these are some of the reasons why we do that. One of the big ones is, you know, because depending on what your asset mix is, you get a lot of volatility in the markets, as we know, if you just read the paper, but, you know, our valuation dates are, you know, as of, you know, the year ended, you know, two thousand and twelve, and we get an asset figure, you know, from an investment consultant saying, this is what the asset balance is at this date, but, you know, at any given point in time, it could be up or down, and so you can get a lot of volatility. And so one of the things we'd like to do is, is to smooth that out so that, you know, each year you're not having these wild up and down movements, and so your contribution is constantly going up and down, because Tom likes contributions to be fairly leveled for purposes of budgeting and things like that. So this is just a typical chart of what, you know, you know, if you, each one of these points is a, is a point in time as far as your valuation report, you know, that could be very typical market movement, and so when you introduce smoothing into it, you can see that the purple line moves that out a lot, a lot nicer, so you're not gonna get a lot of that volatility going on.
Now, another, another one of the major misconceptions that you don't read out in the paper is that, we'll say actuaries like to do things like smoothing gains and losses out so that they don't have, that's not really what we're doing here, I mean, it is, but it isn't. The key point of this is that we have taken a one day snapshot of investments that you've had in the market for three hundred and sixty five days, we've taken one day snapshot each day of the year, and it happens to be at the last second of the market, you have a hundred and eighty seven million dollars in a portfolio, you couldn't have liquidated that all in one second anyways, so even if you had attempted to, it wouldn't have produced the market value that we say is the market value, and so our contention is, well, that's not really any more, it's not any less of a theoretical value than our value. One of the things that happens when you do something like that is you introduce, as Jeff was saying, volatility. It's, it's not that the volatility is a problem, it's that it's not all real, and we don't know how much is real and how much is artificial, and so we employ a smoothing method to attempt to identify that, so that the unreal volatility works its way out and doesn't work itself into the contribution. But real market downturns and upturns, we actually want to reflect those in the assets, it's the ones that are not real we don't wanna reflect.
And the final slide here is just a comment on, the ERS plan is closed, and so, you know, as, as that plan winds down, you know, you want your, you wanna have that money there for the retirees in the long run, and so you're gonna wanna start putting your money into less risky investments, and so, you know, the asset smoothing that we do, that's currently happening over five years, is gonna eventually be no longer needed, because you're gonna be, hopefully you'll have the amount of assets that you need when everybody's retired, it's gonna be a much more stable kind of asset mix, and hopefully, you know, once everybody retires, money there, as long as you contribute, what we're saying, contribute, and everybody is happy, and everybody's getting their retiree pensions, and the city's happy that everybody's being paid, so that's about it.
Could we just go to page seven, I think that's a, a real important, important slide, if you take that. A change in assumptions will not change your long-term cost, only the timing of contributions needed to support the promised benefits. In other words, we changed one of our assumptions, they may change what the ARC is, in other words, we don't like to put in one point four million, because we changed this assumption, but at the end of the day, it doesn't change the cost, right? In other words, I have to contribute more in the next year, because at the end of the day, we have to pay for the benefits that they earn, till the last person's out of the system, whether it be the healthcare, whether it be the pension, right, until the last person moves off into, you know, to the final, then, I mean, that's what I'm saying, in other words, we didn't change assumptions, but it's not gonna change the total cost, it'll only change contribution for one year, you're still gonna have to make it up.
The costs are dictated by the benefits that you're paying out.
That's right.
But how well you're funding it is gonna be depending on how you make those investments, and who makes those investment decisions, and how accurate you are, and how do we do that?
Well, we are doing it, right? We actually are doing that, and so, you know, we.
You make investments every day, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, now, we don't get involved in the actual investments, we actually look at, you know, what the assumed rate, you know, what the expected rate could be based on your investments, and that's how we pick our assumed rate of return.
And actually, and keep in mind, that feeds the next, the next part, if we're in this closed system, right, let's talk the pension system, right, how old is my pension guy, right? He's only got ten years left, if I look at the pension as a whole, he's sixty years old and getting ready to retire at sixty two, right? So from an investment side of it, do I really wanna be eighty percent stocks and twenty percent, right, exactly, because I've got more coming out of the system, I don't have time to take big swings in the market cycle for, for my investment side, because I, we do have more coming out of the system that's going into it, we're sixty, you know what I mean, we're, I got three hundred and some odd, you know, pensioners and sixty two active, what do you think, more going in or more coming out? Got about ten million a year coming out of the system, so with that being said, with that assumption of return of investment helps then, what is the risk then from the investment side that we wanna put in that portfolio, right? A lower assumed risk, I'm not gonna be eighty percent, I, I got, I'll just make that six and a half percent, so we de-risk the portfolio, so they are in tandem, I guess, is the, is the point, okay?
You guys have any questions for us before he goes in the? We beat a lot of it to death, but we're happy to beat it for more.
Okay, so then, we're gonna wrap this up real quick with a, with a little accounting humor, ha, ha, ha.
There's nothing.
All right, so now let's, let's do some comparisons and really some celebrations. So first of all, we're gonna talk about the employee retirement system. There is no such thing as apples and oranges, we just talked about all the different assumptions that each plan can have, the best we can do is, based on our plan, how do we compare to other communities and their plans, and how well funded they are, because keep in mind, they have different benefits that they're offering, they have different assumptions, whatever, but I did wanna illustrate the rate of assumed rate of return and the funding ratio that we talked about, right? Right now, we use a pretty conservative six and a half percent return, would you say that's conservative, Mr. Actuary? Absolutely. Even with this, we're still ninety six point four percent funded, if I raise this to seven and a half percent, would I be closer to a hundred percent funded or closer to ninety percent funded?
You'd probably be over a hundred percent.
I'd probably be over a hundred percent funded, but is that reality compared to how old my system is? Should I be out there trying to, you know, dig seven and a half, eight percent returns, right, based on, because my guy's eighty, you know, he's sixty years old? So, again, this is a realistic, for our plan, a real, a realistic rate of return. MERS, MERS is, is that the association of all systems like ours, they're single employer systems, this is their association, so they're a lot like us, okay, several different communities, right? The average assumed rate of return is seven and a half percent, and the average funded ratio of a MERS type product is about seventy eight point two percent. MERS, MERS is a pooled fund, it's all these communities all in one fund and, and based on their benefits, MERS is, uses a assumed rate of return of eight percent, they're seventy two point six percent funded, State of Michigan uses an eight percent return, and they're about sixty five and a half percent funded, keep in mind, they got about five different plans out there too, right, you got one for the justice, the state police, general employee, you know, so there's, there's more than that. Okay, City of Detroit, right, that's what started this, they're actually aren't too badly funded, are they? Who, who do you service?
I, I, I actually work on the City of Detroit plans, that's.
Really?
Okay.
Not bad, not poorly funded, because that's not the issue they're talking about, are they? They're talking about, we're not gonna make our required contribution, I'm gonna stop funding it, or I'm going to decrease the benefits to, to the pension, that's what's making the news, it's not necessarily that they're poorly funded, they are using about an eight percent return.
Pretty high.
Okay, so again.
Now, keep in mind that just looking at this chart, if you look at those rates and you say, which one has the more conservative, which has the more liberal assumptions?
Yeah.
You can't answer that question, looking at that chart, because you don't know what their investments are.
We don't.
It's, I mean, you know, if you put VCPUP there, the volunteer fire, instead of the employee retirement system, I'd say that, that, that assumption that you're using the six and a half might actually be more aggressive than the City of Detroit's eight percent assumption, because you're all on bonds.
Yeah.
So the, the point of that, the point of that statement is, you cannot look at a single number and, and do a complete comparison.
You gotta know about investments or, and.
Yeah, and there's, there's more to it than that, and Tom and I were talking about this earlier, I'll just tell this, I'll tell the story real quick, I, okay, you got, I got two seconds?
One.
Two plans that I worked out, out west, one was eighty percent funded, one was a hundred and three percent funded, the one that was eighty percent funded was in better shape.
Yes.
Than the one that was a hundred and three percent funded, because the contributions that were going in, both were open plans, was sufficient to cover the normal costs plus they're unfunded. In the hundred and three percent plan, it was not sufficient to cover the normal costs, so they were in a process of defunding that plan. So you've gotta be careful about looking at just single numbers.
Okay. Nope, that's, that's, that's good. Okay, so, success, here's the real issue, right, retiree healthcare, really, that's the, the challenge, not for us, but for most municipalities and not just the state, but the nation, okay, because so long it was pay as you go, we started early, you know, and we're at sixty percent, or almost sixty percent, using again, a pretty conservative rate of return, close to us is nobody, they're using an eight percent of return, and they're sixty one percent funded, you know, and from there, then it just gets, you know, yourself who, you know, so much similar to us, Southeast Michigan, large community, fourteen to twenty eight percent funded, because they have a, a general employees and they got their police employees, but still, try and give you an idea, not apples and apples, but still, it kinda lets you know really where you stand compared to other plans. State of Michigan is zero to ten point five percent funded, they got about four plans, three of them they don't fund at all, and the one that they do fund is about ten and a half percent funded, okay? Again, Detroit is zero because they don't pre-fund at all, retiree healthcare, and this is one of the biggest, you know, what we can see, costs that we've got out there, right, going forward, and then just a couple, again, neighbors, ones closer to our size, again, success. Conclusion, although the city does, they have some components of legacy costs, it's not unusual, again, it's the difference between what actually happens and what the actuaries are using and their assumptions in developing those ARCs, it has experienced significant success in reducing its liabilities, and probably most of all, budgeting for continued required contributions, because that's what's gonna hurt you if you stop making contributions, or do not make the contribution that they ask you to. I can point to several communities up here that don't make the hundred percent of their contribution. I can point to several communities up here that don't make the 100% of their contribution. They'll say, you need to put in 100,000. Hey, we can't afford it because I need police officers, you know what I mean? Services. Hey, look, we'll be lucky to give you, you know, 50,000. So, but that's, but again, what are you doing? At the end of the day, you're going to have to pay the whole cost, you know?
Price. I need to take care of some housekeeping issue here with time. We need to waive rule 27 to continue past midnight. So move a resolution-
Move 27.
Okay. For half an hour, 45 minutes?
Forty-five minutes.
For 45 minutes. Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Councilman Fleming. Go 45 minutes past.
City manager, can we do 45 minutes?
We've got a closed session also. We'll change it if we have to.
Yeah, I guess.
All support? Sorry.
No, no, that's all right. So you-
Your lady was having a hard time.
That's a motion that I need to stop now, right? That was like my buzzer.
He's trying to do her job.
She thought I waited too long.
Any questions?
I just want to point out that since I joined council, we have a success story here.
It's midnight.
Just trying to mitigate.
Doug, you got it?
Regarding the fire, fire-
Yeah, the VPIB, yeah.
Yes. So it was, my understanding at one point, we were going to crave that into a plan or what?
Did I misunderstand that?
No, it's in process. That's in process.
Yeah, we're currently reviewing within Senate Committee. We're looking at creating a trust. We're looking at, you know, what would be the, the contribution for years of service? How would that be calculated? You know, because they get, you know, we talked about, they get six, they get six oh four, five, four year of service, you know? How, you know, how do you come up with, you know what I mean? To really kind of formalize those type of things. Again, we're working with really the volunteers to come up with something that's going to work for, I guess, them and us.
So with the six-station reps and the chief, myself and Tom, we've met at least four, five, six times. We've enlisted the help of pension attorney Mike Van Overbee, who you may also know from the Detroit general employee system. But he, he does this for a living, develops these plans, a trust, so that the investments can be. And we need to put the format together of who would oversee that because in terms of the investments and that kind of thing in the plan, Mike is doing that and we're set to meet sometime soon again to kick that forward. Because the interesting part is, the Employee Retirement Board oversees the investments for this. If you, you know, I don't know how many people know, who, who actually makes the investments? Do you think Tom does? No, there's a, you all remember, there's a group. But yet, you make the decisions on what the, the benefit increases are. So there's, you know, there's a, different people making different decisions that all come together, and then these guys do the X-ray and tell you how it all, how it all shook out. So long-
Give me the quick answer. When, when do you think they'll be?
We want to do it for this next budget year.
It's a process.
And it, it would be underfunded by whatever that number is the first day? I mean, right? Is that what I read correctly?
Well, this evaluation wouldn't necessarily change by doing it. I mean, we're talking about a legal entity. So one of the things that could happen is we might, you know, if you, if you were to liberalize your assumptions, you might say, okay, well, maybe we could use a 7% interest rate if you change the way you, you, you invest it. Or we might say, okay, well, now the six and a half percent is actually more attainable so we don't actually have to lower it. You know, otherwise, if you didn't do that, we, I think we only just found out last year that it was not a qualified plan. I think it was the meeting that I came out to, to talk to.
But at the end of the day, that's a six and a half, you know, assumption, six and a half percent return make sense or not. If you get further in, say, look, you're only making two, you know, you're just going to come to me, look, you need to get real here. Oh, by the way, your 800,000 now is going up to 1.6 million.
Right. So, you know, we have $6 million worth of assets that we'll put in this other entity which we can invest into the market. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely correct. I mean, that would be the suggest, clearly, it's your, your choice, but I'd say what you've already set aside, right? The most of the trust, for sure.
You do a lot of cities. Detroit has a success story. We're moving in the right direction. We should keep, keep going with where we're going. Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, thank you, Rob. We're going right. My main concern has been for a few years, since I set a little while on that pensions board, was how we're really investing all this money, how we're making those decisions, how that's being managed. Because that's concerning, how we're getting the right of return. Because it really wasn't comfortable the way we're doing. I know you're working on changes. Hopefully, we're moving closer to some more professional help there because sitting around the room and deciding how we're going to buy stocks every month was not my cup of tea.
How do you de-risk it?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That's a, how do you de-risk?
That's, that's, Keith, I know you guys are working on that. That's the biggest thing I've concerned, how do we invest these, these pension funds and how we make those decisions, how do we manage it? Because we've been doing pretty good, but it's risky, I think, considering.
Another way to look at the answer to your question, and Tom, Tom mentioned this, and he, he said it real quick though, so it might have fallen under the radar. The ERS plan pays out $10 million in benefits a year. You know, if you, if you kind of put that in context, your total payroll, he had up on the slide, there was, your active payroll was $27 million, right?
Or, but that's total, that's, but that wasn't, that was total payroll for the city, not what was eligible for these-
No, I understand that. I understand that. But just, I mean, just, you know, the total payroll of the city, $27 million. The pension benefits for the ERS is 10 million. You're contributing 1 and 1/2 million to it, and you're 95% funded.
Very darn good.
You know, so that is a success story. You, you, you did do all the right things in the past to get you to where you're at.
Councilman Teetz?
My, my last question for the evening, until I think of another one, is-
The same here or last?
Yeah, right. The, the pension board, how long till we get professional management money?
Well, that's, Wade was just asking.
But I didn't hear a date. I mean, is there a date?
It's up to the board. It's up to the, the board has to make that decision.
See, that's a completely separate entity that governs themselves, basically.
Right. But it has big implications here.
City council doesn't have anything to do with what they do other than to appoint a council member to be a representative. That is a completely separate entity on its own that makes their own decisions, but-
In the day, we'd be finding any shortfall, though.
But having said that-
Right.
-there is, there is leadership of the city that's involved in that and council and I think they're moving, they're moving as fast as they can move at this point.
We are trying to make that happen.
Well, let me say, let me say it this way. It may not be something we decide, but as a city council, if we don't see that happen, there needs to be great encouragement from the city council. Because professional money management, for the public's sake, we do not have professional money managers managing this money. That, we have a group of individuals that sit around and make decisions based on their best knowledge. All we're asking, all I want to see happen is, we have specialists taking money management decisions with the pension dollars that have been put forward by the taxpayer. So if, if there is a sticking point, I think the cit, the citizens, the city should know that because people need to be encouraged.
Yeah. I think you need to let the process weigh out. I mean, we've gone out for, without going through the whole process, but, you know, and Tom should, should have a slide up there that shows, you've done an RFP-
RFP is out.
...backs, they've selected, they consulted, they've negotiated a contract with a consultant. Now it's a matter of the board feeling comfortable with all the parameters of what's in that scope of services and, and-
So it's moving forward and it's-
And making progress and some people, and there, and there will probably be a few no votes or maybe not. I, I guess I shouldn't, now I'm really talking out of school. There, there is some reluctance, Dave, some that work.
Yeah, we, we've been working on it for over a year now, and we're inching really, really close to, to hopefully getting that done. So, you know, I don't know how much more can be said about it, but, you know, we have, we have a team selected. We just now have to get it.
We talked about this at another session, and our direction was to, to Councilman Henderson to go in there and represent us. That message has been taken to the board, that that's our encouragement to them, and that's what they're trying to do.
That was over a year ago. That was before I got, came on.
Yeah, it was, geez.
Well, that's, I guess, the 20 long election.
That's where I'm getting at, is-
We've done our part. Now it's up to Dave to follow.
We're close. The, the plan is there, we just have to have it-
Dave's not alone in wanting to move forward.
I know you are, Tom.
So we'll get there very soon in answer to your question. I, I'm very optimistic.
It's not an easy thing to convince people in that industry to just turn over that sizable amount of money and, and relinquish control, so.
But a lot of progress has been made in the last year that I've been here. You've gone through the whole RFP process. I mean, there's a lot of progress made for that group we've been for.
Okay. We'll watch it.
You can't complain about the job that they've done.
I was just going to say, am I missing something? But they've done a pretty decent job in the meantime.
And nobody, I don't think anybody's disputing that.
They're right, right, right.
We're just saying-
The concern is a lot of money at stake.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Going right, Rex. See you get there. We can talk sometime.
Okay.
Well, Councilman Henderson's going to want to give up his position on that board and that usually goes to the-
Last piece work to do.
To the new, new councilperson.
Yeah, that's my strength.
Okay.
Any questions?
Well, you know, I'm with, you know, Councilman Teetz, you know, on the fire, you know, is an issue that needs to be resolved. Obviously, we all know that. We always like to hear success stories. Thank you. Thanks for coming here.
Thank you, guys. Good work, man.
We'll take a slight recess and come back for our closed session after, get your room cleared. Be back in about three to five minutes.
You want some coffee? You want some?